I'd like to call this May 16th session of the Hoyoke City Council to order, the clerk will call the roll and record those members present.
Bartley.
Here.
Bresnahan.
Here.
Grady.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Leahy.
Present.
LeBron Martinez.
Here.
Lisi.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
McGivern.
Here.
Roman.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Tolman.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Valentine.
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyoke.
And the city, com.
I believe we have an item that's, is it in the Finance Committee reports, Mr. Chairman? I believe it's that bond order item. We're going to remove that from committee, I believe.
I'll make a motion and remove it from committee.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to, just once, give the chairman a second to get that item out. Okay, a motion on the floor is to remove from committee an item marked formally Agenda Item 31 of the City Council from our March 21st, 2017 meeting relative to some bond language changes that we need to make. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. In order introduced by Councilor Todd McGee that each prior order of the City Council that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay costs of capital projects is hereby supplemented to provide that in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, and as most recently amended by the Municipal Modernization Act, so-called "the premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes therunder, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of the issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied." This is requested by the mayor, as requested originally by the city treasurer, and it was forwarded to us by the city auditor. I believe in support of that, there was a communication that was forwarded from an Abby Jeffers from First Southwest in support of that, and I believe the city treasurer, I don't know, would you like to address this, Sandy? Okay. A motion to suspend the rules to allow the city treasurer to address the city council.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Sandy, I believe if you would like me to briefly go through a synopsis of the communication from, would that be helpful to you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'll do that. So from Ms. Jeffers, there was a communication dated May 10th. Hi Sandy, in order for the city to apply for Municipal Finance Oversight Board for the use of the State Qualified Bond Act, the city must authorize itself to file such an application. The loan orders approved in December 2016 do not include the appropriate language for the city to file an application with the MFOB. Bond council has prepared the attached orders, which the city will need to approve in order to include the authorizations mentioned above in the upcoming bond issue. Once approved, please send us a copy. If 44A blanket language is not approved, the city cannot include these projects in the upcoming bond issue. For your reference, then she goes through a small treatise on the State Qualified Bond Act dating back to 1980. There's a couple paragraphs on that. She then goes on to say, as mentioned above, in order for the city to request permission from the MFOB to issue bonds as state-qualified pursuant to the program, the city has to authorize itself to make such a request, and the authorization to do so in the vote authorizing the bonds, or in a separate vote if the bonds have already been authorized. In addition, we also attach an order to address the recently permitted use of bond and note premiums as enacted by the Municipal Modernization Act. We suggest the city council pass this order to give the city the flexibility to apply premiums to project costs at the time of issue of any bonds or notes, simultaneously reducing the par amount of bonds or notes being issued for borrowing authorizations that have been already approved but not permanently financed." Then she goes on to say, please let me know if the city council passes this. So this speaks to two changes. In Order 31, I only see the one relative to allowing the premiums to be used to reduce bond costs. I don't see language allowing the first action to take place. So I don't know, is there supposed to be a separate order as well? Because it looked like there were supposed to be two, but I only see language for one.
Yeah, the only thing that I think they're looking for is the language to be approved by the city council, and then when we do apply for bonds, then they send us the proper paperwork that we review and go and to different departments depending on where the bond is going to be issued for whatever project, and that's when you get the documentation in regards to what they're going to bond us for.
Okay, so you're saying that the only thing you need is this one?
The only thing I need is this language.
This one order?
Yes.
That was introduced on March 17?
Yes, that's all I need. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, councilors? Counselor Lisi?
Does this relate at all to the late filed order by Councilor McGee regarding the Municipal Modernization Act?
Perhaps. Do you have, can you give me the thing in the late file? Something might have been introduced in his name. We had a lot of late files come in for this meeting.
Again, that might have been only because when the last financial committee meeting, Bellamy asked Mr. McGee in regards to that. Unfortunately, I was having surgery, so I couldn't answer any of the questions, so I think that's why it got tabled and was not presented to the city council at the time.
How many late files are there, Mr. President?
A lot.
Many.
More than 10?
Including the budget, by the way, was filed late file. We could have been rats and say, sorry, you didn't file it on time and you didn't meet the 45-day rule under state law, but.
I don't think we've accepted it yet.
We haven't. We're not that kind of people, though. We rise above, we rise above these things. So anyways, I don't see anything, but there could be in that large pile relative to this, but what I can say is I do have the benefit of the original request filed by the treasurer that we've now taken out of the Finance Committee, is now sitting before us. So, yes, Counselor Grady.
Can we make a motion to pass the language?
Yeah.
Second.
I think that would be appropriate. So there's a motion to adopt this and allow this authorization as requested by the city treasurer. Is there a second to that?
I second it.
Second that. Any other discussion, questions, thoughts? Hearing none. Clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of allowing this authorization, a no vote is to deny it.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved that language. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Hope you're feeling better, by the way. Good. I also, I wanted to dispense with that item, because I did promise the treasurer I would try and get her out, but I also did would be remiss if I didn't recognize Brian Manacheck, our normal cameraman, is not feeling well and having surgery, so I did want to just wish him well and certainly give him our thoughts and prayers as he's having some surgeries, rather serious surgery, actually, and we wish Brian well. We appreciate his service every other Tuesday. He handles the camera for our meetings.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It might be appropriate if we could send him something from the flower fund?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Good idea.
Yeah, a little pick-me-up, absolutely. I'll make those arrangements. Thank you. We have two items laid on the table, councilors. Is it our pleasure to do anything with those?
Motion to take up item number one.
Okay. Motion is to remove from the table item number one. Item number one is relative to a DGNR committee report. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay. "The Committee on Development of Government Relations, to whom was referred an order then in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30B, and the Hoyoke Code of Ordinance is procurement ordinance, the city council considered declaring three parcels as surplus property available for disposition. Said properties are identified by the Hoyoke Board of Assessors as parcels 11700018, 117000145, and 11700148. These parcels are more particularly described at the Hambin County Registries of Deeds and Books 3658, Page 325, Book 16921, Page 558, and in Plan Book 378, Page 97. Accordingly, plan copy attached. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted, councilors Bartley, Tolman, Sullivan, and Roman." Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
Second. My discussion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report under discussion. The chairman, Councilor.
Yeah, so I know there's a late filed order. So can I, can we suspend the rules and take up that order that's relative to this? It's, I think it's a letter from DHCD, and so you should probably, you know, you might want to read that in before we take a vote.
Okay.
On this, and then I'll make another, I'll make another motion at some point to suspend the rules and allow the executive director to address us, or.
Okay. All right. Counselor Bartley has made a motion to suspend the rules to, at this time, also take up late file J, which is a communication from the Department of Housing and Community Development for the state of Massachusetts. It's all communication dated May 10th from a Crystal Cornegey, undersecretary. All in favor of suspending the rules to take this up, also at this time and to allow discussion of this item, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay. It is, it's about one page and a little bit. Would you like me to read it, or have we had the benefit of this? I think it came in email.
It did.
Okay. So I will not read it unless I'm asked to, but.
No.
It's concerning the congregate housing issue. Yes, Counselor Lisi.
So I was, can you read it, please? I just want to.
Sure.
Yeah.
And I was just under the impression that Crystal was an undersecretary at the HHA, who came in on HHA letterhead, didn't that?
Came under Department of Housing, Community and Community Development letterhead. She lists herself as Crystal Cornegey, undersecretary of that department.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I believe I heard a couple councilors say they'd like me to read this. So it's addressed to the mayor and council members. It says, "Dear Mayor Morris, I'm writing to ask for your support in preserving an important and affordable housing resource for frail seniors in Hoyoke. As you may know, the housing authority, state public housing, congregate elderly residents at 43 Lower Westfield Road, was constructed more than 20 years ago on land leased from the abutting Geriatric Authority of Hoyoke. Due to the Geriatric Authority's recent insolvency, the city of Hoyoke now owns the site and is the holder of the 99-year lease to the HHA. I understand that discussions are currently underway in the city concerning the possible sale of the elderly housing site with a city council vote planned for May 16. I wish to express my very strong support for the continued operation of this housing development at its current location under the terms and conditions of the original 91 ground lease. DHCD funded the full development cost of $1.4 million for this 20-unit development in 1994 based on the terms of that ground lease, and have provided additional funds since then to subsidize the day-to-day operating costs for capital improvements needed to ensure that the site can continue to provide high-quality, affordable housing. Replicating this program elsewhere would easily cost in excess of $5 million. The residents of our congregate elderly programs like this one tend to be frailer and in greater need of services to maintain their independence. The Hoyoke site has been particularly successful in providing the right mix of quality housing and needed services that are almost impossible for extremely low-income seniors to find elsewhere. DHCD is deeply committed to the preservation of all affordable housing, has had a long and close partnership with both the HHA and the city of Hoyoke. The successful development and operation of this congregate development is a prime example of this partnership, and I look forward to continuing that, and the site, and this site continues to provide a warm and supportive home for frail seniors for many years to come, and then it's signed sincerely, the undersecretary."
So I'll make a motion to receive that, Mr. President.
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive this communication. All in favor?
Aye.
And just under discussion, Mr. President?
Yep.
So I think we heard the arguments last two weeks ago. I don't think there's a need to reiterate. I did receive an email today from Marcos Marrero, who copied in Matt Mainville, but I think it's probably, and Matt, I'm sure saw, sure certainly read the email. I don't know if this is sent anywhere other than Matt and me, and I can read the gist of it, but I'm going to make a motion now, Mr. President, to suspend our rules and to allow Matt Mainville, the executive director of Hoyoke Housing Authority, to address us and answer any questions.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to allow the executive director of the housing authority to address the city council and answer any questions that we may have. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay, so Matt, so just, so, you know, nobody wants to put words in your mouth now. So I had this email here from Marcos saying, you know, Matt and I have spoken on multiple occasions, and he is comfortable that the surplus declaration and RFP process we have proposed would not by itself be a problem for HHA's interest in the remaining congregate house, since any further action would depend on (a) proposals received, including the congregate parcel; (b) any proposals under a having a viable plan to make the HHA and tenants whole; and (c) you must have approval by the city council of such a plan. The HHA further understands that declaring the parcel surplus, which is in the end the only matter being voted on by the council at this point, would also be the first step in transferring the property to HHA. So, so Matt, with that, do you want us to address the situation right now? Our vote at this point would be to only declare it surplus. So if you want to expand upon your thinking, that'd be great.
Absolutely. This conversation has been going on now for over two years when the Geriatric Authority first started to run into its issues, and I know that at that point, Councilor Bartley had filed an order. We then asked Councilor McGee, and Councilor McGee was kind enough to file an order that sat in a subcommittee for, I think, going on 16 months now, asking for this property to be declared surplus and then conveyed to the housing authority. So yes, indeed, we have been talking not only to Marcos that sat in, uh, a subcommittee for, I think, going on 16 months now, asking for this property to be declared surplus and then conveyed to the Housing Authority. So, yes, indeed, we have been talking, uh, not only to Marcos, but to the city about this issue since we have realized that there were issues with the Geriatric Authority and might then have issues with the lease that, uh, pertains to the congregate house. So, I understand that, uh, Marcos is tasked with the idea of marketing the Geriatric Authority. The Housing Authority is tasked with the idea of making sure that we provide supportive housing to those frail elders that we are tasked to house. We have agreed to the idea that there should be and needs to be, uh, uh, action on declaring the property surplus. But our intentions, and I think Marcos would repeat this as well, is that we've always contended that we want the property conveyed to the Housing Authority for the opportunity to continue in perpetuity the housing and the activities that we have done on that site, uh, since 1994. We have, again, then communicated with DHCD. We did receive a letter from, uh, Crystal Cornegey, uh, that was addressed to the City Council President as well as the mayor, and we actually have one from the Office of Elder Affairs stating the same thing. Uh, I think that those parties are very much interested, as you read into the, to the record this evening, interested in making sure that this continues to be an activity that we provide at 43 Lower Westfield Road. Uh, so those are the nature of the conversations we've been having with Marcos. We understand, uh, that the first step is definitely indeed to, uh, declare the property surplus, but we'd like to see it packaged so that we have a continued control of that property moving forward. Uh, you know, we are in the business of providing housing security, and we feel that the way to do that is to declare it surplus and then convey to the Housing Authority, an activity that has happened in the past with, with vacant parcels in the city of Hooyok.
Mr. President?
Counsel Green.
Yeah, uh, maybe you can answer this, Matt, or, uh, Mr. President. If we declare this surplus, could we put a caveat on it that the congregate housing is directly, goes directly to the Hooyok Housing Authority?
My interpretation is that...
As part of the order?
My interpretation is that could be the case. I know that in the past, that has been the activity that's been undertaken for other development activities that we have had. I'm not a lawyer, and I haven't, uh, but Priscilla Chesky, I think, has, has conveyed that that could indeed be the case, yes. And that's what we would look for as it relates to this.
Thank you. Well, let's just address that point right now. I mean, the City Council, unilaterally, we cannot sell property of the city of Hooyok. That would have to be authorized by the mayor. There would have to be, I mean, you need approval of the mayor with the consent of the City Council to, to sell real estate. That's, that's not what the mayor has requested here. The mayor has requested through his departments that we declare the parcel surplus. We're either yes or no on that, but that's, that's the vote. Uh, we can't do that in one transaction. After we declare it surplus, then the mayor could conceivably come in with a proposal that says, "We would like to sell this piece of property to the Housing Authority for X dollars," you know? So, I just, on, on, just on the procedure component of this, um, Counsel Lopez had his hand up next.
If that, Mr. President, if that's the case, um, I would like to make a motion to table, and let me follow the late filed order, and wait for the mayor to respond, and see if he's going to transfer this property to, to the Raymond Murphy Congregate Housing. If that's not happening, I'm not voting for it.
Second. Well, what I would ask is, I think we've got people here, I would, only because if you, that's not a debatable motion, and I will recognize you at some point for that motion if you feel you want to, in the end, go that direction, but I'd like to allow this conversation to continue this evening, and then we may come to that, okay? But I will recognize you, Counsel Lopez, if that's the case. So, uh, continuing on questions and comments, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. A quick question. Uh, in lieu of what the President just said, Matt, have you been in negotiations with the mayor? Have you been in discussions about this with the mayor?
We have talked about the idea of, uh, our interest in receiving and having a, uh, a fee simple deed on the property, but we have not entered into negotiations with the mayor. No, we haven't.
Is, can you share any response with us? Are you comfortable with the discussion with the mayor?
The mayor has indicated that, uh, he's approving of what we've done at the congregate house up to this point, and would like to see it move forward into the future, uh, but that's the general sense of the conversation. It hasn't come down to, we, you know, a dollar price or a negotiation about the particular issue.
The, the importance, and, and certainly, your, your, uh, your efforts and your responsibilities and, and the noble part of what you're trying to continue to do is, is recognized, I think, by all of us here, but we're, we're behind a rock and a hard place. We're $1.3 million in the hole with the land behind you, which the city bonded to save the Geriatric Authorities, you know, a decade and a half ago, and we've got, we've assumed a lot of problems with the way the Geriatric Authority went under with the buildings and the existing buildings, and the need to be able to, to be able to market them. Um, I would like to think that it could all be done in a way that everybody wakes up and the congregate home is still there, the land, you know, some of the money is made back on the land, and either the buildings are used for a good reuse, or someone, you know, wants to demolish them to develop behind you. And I would think the Hooyok Housing Authority should be part of those discussions with the mayor and the, uh, the Economic Development, um, office itself. But regardless, Mr. President, none of what is being said here cannot start unless we vote the property surplus.
That's correct.
And that's all that's before us. In the past, that's never been an issue, and it, it just opens up the door to allow for more pertinent discussions from the Housing Authority, from marketing the land behind the Housing Authority, and from marketing the former geriatric buildings themselves.
Right. To, to your point, the mayor actually cannot really, and shouldn't, I think it would be inappropriate for him to enter into negotiations to sell a piece of property that the City Council has given him no authority to even sell. I mean, that's like saying, "Well, you know, how much would you like for City Hall?" I mean, uh, until we declare it surplus, he really, that would really be inappropriate. And then, in fairness to him, he would be receiving criticism the other way. The other thing that I had suggested to council for the Housing Authority was that you really should, if we do declare it surplus tonight, and that's the direction the council goes, you know, make a good faith offer. I think it should be supported by an appraisal. What is the property worth? No different than you would purchase congregate hous- you know, a, a house on, you know, or a lot that you wanted to put a duplex on, on Chestnut Street, or any other piece of property that you would like to purchase. The city is in, with all due respect, I know, and I don't want to use names, but there has been an order filed to say, "Oh, well, just give it to the Housing Authority for a dollar." I mean, I would be totally diametrically opposed to that, because why? This parcel is our only mechanism to recoup the $3 million that we've lost to the Geriatric Authority. So, unfortunately, we're in no position, uh, to just give away assets. I mean, we, we really, whether you can get the money from the state or whatever, I would be, myself speaking only personally, be very open to, uh, you know, a, a deal to sell it to the Housing Authority, but at fair market price, just like you would pay if you wanted this parcel for it. So, I think that's a conversation, if this does go forward tonight, you really should work with Marcos and the mayor and begin to have those conversations, and then bring us into it, and then we can sit down and, and, and come up with what's a fair number. Um, because, you know, as, as noble as 20 residents at the congregate house, I could also make the case to say, "The $3 million that we lost at the Geriatric Authority, that's teachers' jobs, that's cops, that's firemen, that's fire apparatus." I mean, there, we, we all have noble missions.
I, I, I don't disagree. Um, I know that the, the issue around the Geriatric Authority bound the city with financial burdens, uh, but what I would say, and what I would like to rebut with, is first and foremost that the Housing Authority is a good partner. We owe nothing in our municipal bills. We pay our water, we pay our utility bills, we pay our retirement, so the issue around the Geriatric Authority is separate and distinct from the Housing Authority. I want to make sure that that's clear and that's understood. Uh, the second part of that conversation is that the, uh, the, the folks that signed this, uh, ground lease with the Housing Authority back in 1991 with the approval of the City Council contemplated that there would be no cost for the property. As such, the state came forward with one point, a little over $1.4 million of their own assets to put into this property. Uh, they are very much of the mindset that that was an investment in this community, an investment in our frail elders, uh, and they have continued to support that through both grants through the economic off, uh, the, uh, Office of Elder Affairs as well as through DHCD. Uh, so there, there is a financial commitment to that property. Um, you know, we, uh, will take this into consideration and look at it, but, but considering the fact that we are a good partner, that we continue to make sure that we are, uh, a friend to the city of Hooyok, uh, you know, we should not be lumped in with what had happened at the Geriatric Authority. So, I think they're two separate and distinct issues.
Well, I think I've made my point as to how they're linked. I mean, it's obvious. The, the, the reason we foreclosed on the property is for the express purpose of recouping our $3 million.
So then, so then ultimately...
So, the sale of this parcel that, of to wit, someone foolishly decided to build a building on someone that had a 99-year lease that ultimately got foreclosed on, now your, your legal rights are completely in jeopardy. That wasn't the greatest, uh, you know, decision in 1991.
The City Council voted on that as well.
Yeah. Uh, no, no harm to us, harm to you. I don't know why the Housing Authority decided that that was a, a good way to own an estate and land. Uh, was there, was there a question? I thought I saw some hands up. Counsel McGivern?
I, I just, you know, and Mr. Mainville's, you know, good partner, I agree. I mean, there's no, no one's questioning Hooyok Housing Authority in relationship with the city, Matt. I mean, I think that's always been, over the years, um, a positive relationship and, and one that, you know, is fruitful in many areas. Um, you do pay your bills on time. There, there's one bill, though, you don't pay, and it's called property tax.
We, we do make pilot payments, though.
I just want to note that Marcos Marrero is here in the audience as well, in case, um, we want to hear from Marcos at all, but...
Yeah, that would be helpful.
The, the, I think the point needs to be made clear that our vote tonight is, um, simply to declare the three parcel surplus to see, um, what comes back, um, in terms of proposals, um, and the proposal could be for one of the parcels, two of the parcels, three of the parcels. Um, I think we should have an understanding of what the possibilities are there, and that doesn't mean that we have to or are bound in any way to accepting any of those proposals. And I think that, you know, given, given this letter from DHCD, um, it, it, I feel that there's a lot of, um, meshing together the two separate votes, one declaring the property surplus, and then two, um, the selling of the property. So, I'm not even sure, based on this letter, if, um, the Under-Secretary understands the vote is to declare it surplus this evening as opposed to sell the property. Um, and I do want to just keep on stressing that fact, that we should have, um, all options open to us, um, and I think that if, if down the line, there is an option that says, um, we want to pursue, or there's someone, I should say, there's a developer who wants to pursue some sort of amazing development on all three parcels, um, that we would work with that developer to relocate, um, the residents of the, of the congregate house. I, I think that this body, um, understands that the Housing Authority is doing important work, noble work, um, in terms of taking care of the frail elders at congregate house. They're providing an important service to the community. I don't think we'd want to see that washed away, but I think that we should figure out, it's like a puzzle, you know, how can we move the pieces around to make sure that, um, everybody's, um, walking away with something that works for them, including the city.
Mr. President? Just to Counsel Lisi's point, which is a good one, the last sentence of the first paragraph of the Under-Secretary's letter states, "I understand that discussions are currently underway in the city concerning the possible sale of the elderly housing site with a City Council vote planned for May 16." Just so we're clear, this is not the sale of the property.
It, it is.
This is simply saying, "This property is available for sale to you, sale to whomever, sale to anyone, and then we will consider any offers, assumingly that people will negotiate with Marcos's office and the mayor's office, and then we say yes, no, or may, you know, yes or no."
So, the key word in the sentence you just used was "sale, sale, sale."
Yeah.
Uh, so that Crystal Cornegey is quite clear on the idea that this is going to be an effort to declare the property surplus, then package it in a solicitation, which ultimately has the meaning of looking for sale of the property.
Mr. President?
She's very much interested in making sure that this asset that the state has invested in remains in the portfolio of the Housing Authority and continues to, uh, do exactly what we have talked about already, so...
It's just, I would like the messaging to get back to the residents, because I'm getting phone calls saying, "I hope you're not putting me in the street." And I'm just saying, there's no vote to do anything like that here this evening, just so we're clear.
Right. And just so, I just want to make sure that, uh, that, that it gets stated, you know, we have made every effort to communicate to our residents on an ongoing basis. The first time that Counsel Bartley filed his order, we had an open house, and I know that, uh, Counsel Tomlin showed up and Counsel Bresnahan showed up. So, we want to make sure that we continue to communicate with our residents. In fact, there is a vote this evening that is, uh, has implications on the congregate house and the, uh, the residents in which they live. So, that's the conversation that this has happened.
That's a fair point. Okay. Mr. President? Ca- uh, just, uh, go ahead, Counsel.
Uh, just, just for the record, uh, we're talking about 20 residents or 19 residents, but we have to take into consideration that these people have families, and their entire families are going to be affected by what we do here tonight, and I think that's something that we should pay very careful attention to.
I agree. Counsel Bartley?
Uh, okay. Well, I already spoke once. Does somebody else want to?
No, I think, believe you were next. Yep.
Okay. So, uh, well, thank you, Mr. President. Let's be very brief. So, one, one point, Matt, you know, you, you did say that, yeah, it's been in committee 16 months, you're right, it is no go, but, but were, were you not here before the committee?
Yeah, and then it never made its way to, to the full City Council.
Because what happened? Well, it was tabled. I mean, that, that's just, just a procedural process, Matt, so I, I just want to clear that you were, I mean, he was here before us.
Right.
I mean, well, I know I'm right, but, you know, you say, you say it's in committee 16 months, and then you kind of leave it hanging. I mean, you, you were absolutely here with, with, with council and, and, and a staff person. So, we, we had a, we had a good discussion about it, um, and, and the order was filed by Todd, um, to, to, to convey it to, uh, to convey it to the Housing Authority for, for a dollar. Um, we, we reviewed it, we, we discussed it, and we tabled it. So, it, it was, it was a fair, just, you know, I, I just want to just kind of give the whole flavor, Matt. I mean, just, so while we're, just laying the cards on the table here, and just the last thing, I think we said it three times, it seems like we're talking over each other all the time. That seems, that's all we're doing, is talking over. I mean, I, yeah, the vote, any vote we take here is going to affect something, every vote we take, but, Mr. President, we're not voting to sell this property. We're voting to see what the property's worth by declaring surplus, that's all.
Counsel McGee?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, first, for disclosure purposes, uh, my father-in-law is Ray Murphy, the building was named after him. After talking with ethics, I don't have an ethical issue because I don't have a financial interest in it, it's just his name's on the building, so that disclosure's out there. Um, with regards to process, to be really clear, I did file the order. I didn't find out about the meeting until the day of that that committee was going to take up my order. Then I called Matt and had him come in. So, for due process, we didn't find out about it until the day of, which then Matt was able to round up his team to get in here. In that meeting, we were told there was a certain email and something from Marcos Marrero that couldn't be discussed, and therefore we must table the order because there was Lo and behold, we get an email from Marcos saying it really wasn't important. You could have told everyone about what was going on. So in all due fairness, we were led to believe in that committee meeting, there was an email from Marcos that we really needed to dive into and discuss. And I know Kevin's shaking his head because that's exactly what happened. And then lo and behold, it wasn't as important or secretive as it should have been when it was discussed in that meeting. So, here's the real issue. What you have before you isn't so much about, you know, moving a facility or declaring it surplus or selling it. To me, it comes down to the state. When the state gives you money and you move a piece of property, can the state come back and whack you for it? That's the answer I'm looking for. If we all need a history lesson, let's go back to the library project. We're all going to expand the library out a little bit, but lo and behold, I kept saying, "We got to stop a minute. If you expand the footprint..." We accepted a grant way before I was even on the council to put in grass and trees and sidewalk. The state came back and said, "Touch it. You'll never see another nickel again." That's how nasty they were. Then we had to go through state permission to then take the land that we did use grant money for in order to then get an exception. Matt, did you reach out to the state with regards to the 1, 1.4 million plus all the money they've been giving us over time to help keep the house up and running? And the issue we might have if we touch that property?
I think she alludes to it in the letter, saying that if there were an opportunity to have to move that property, they would be looking for around $5 million for replacement of that building somewhere else.
So we would have to come up with $5 million to replace the property?
That's, that's the inclination I got from it.
And what if we said no?
I think that would jeopardize, you know, I'm, I'm speaking a little out of school here, but I would think that would jeopardize future funding for...
That, that's the issue. You, you know, I, I understand it's a beautiful piece of property. Uh, we all like to tie it to the geriatric authority. I sat in that corner for years, begging people to get a budget, a budget from them. They came in with a one-page piece of paper. Here's our budget. This is the city budget. 127 million, page upon page, line on, they came in with a single page and said liabilities, $10 surplus. They actually showed us that they had money on a one-pager. I begged this council to do something with that facility. Don't tie this facility to that mistake. That's the issue. So here, you have people that are taken care of. These are seniors, low-income seniors that need help, and we're, we're bashing around because we want to go sell the property for something else. Okay, if that's the case, then come up with a plan. No plan, just declare it surplus. We hide behind this little thing, "Oh, we got to declare it surplus for..." We know the whole total view of it. You declare it surplus, and then someone comes in and says, "Hey, guess what? We're going to put in a new mall complex, X number of millions, blah, blah, blah." Okay, they take it. But you're not really addressing the factor is, they've been here, they were told they could have the property, maybe it was done wrong way before we were here, 99-year lease, it should have been given to them. That's why I filed my order to correct the mistake. The facility's there, 1.4 million, almost two, probably 2 million now from state funds, that no one really wants to touch yet. They want to touch that topic. Give me the answer to that, or show me the $5 million. You take that from stabilization? So here, answer the state, I will second Dostado Lopez's motion to table this and go to the mayor and say, "Give us the property to give to the Housing Authority and fix the mistake that this council way before did wrong on a 99-year lease."
So much to say after that, but go ahead, Counselor Bacon, you're next up.
Oh, I'm going to try to stay on point for the moment. My concern about this property is that as we sit here debating history, which is not now, I mean, we're in the circumstances we are today because of a whole long list of things that happened. And I have all due respect for services to our frail elders. That's the field I work in, and so there's nothing to diminish the value of that in my comments. However, we have a very large and one of the most valuable properties in the city languishing, abandoned, sitting there. How many times have we heard from our planners in the city that the worst thing we can do is leave empty buildings languishing on property? Whether, and I will also disclose that I've been approached individually to be lobbied to turn the property over to the Housing Authority for a dollar. This was within the last two years, and I told them, speaking only for myself, in good conscience, given the financial condition of the city, I could not say to you that I could make that promise. It is a noble and worthy goal, and if we weren't broke, I'd be the first one lining up to do it. However, the city, I mean, you can spin it that we're doing okay because we have a good stabilization fund, but the reality is we've been in a structural deficit for years, and we all know that as we're looking at another deficit budget with a $1.3 million hole in it. And so for me, I believe we have an obligation to the community to seek out what options are available for the property, which does not exclude the Housing Authority at all. But the history that led up to the place that we're at relative to the legal condition and the legal obligations between the city, the state, and whatever contractual obligations exist, I'm sure will be thoroughly vetted. Nothing can be vetted or done until and unless we declare the property surplus. And I urge my colleagues to at least make it available to see what is out there and not to exclude or set aside the Housing Authority or anybody else. Thank you.
Counselor Lisi?
Um, I just thought, um, since we keep on talking about planning and, and languishing properties, I thought it would be an appropriate time to ask Marcos Marrero to make some comments on, on the planning department's perspective on these properties.
Okay. All, all right. All in favor of allowing Marcos Marrero to address the city council on this issue?
Aye.
So moved. Before that, um, I did want to recognize Counselor Lee. Did you have some comments you'd like to make? Or before we go into questions?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, and I was going to see if I could ask, um, Priscilla a, a question as well.
Okay. Um, do we want to hear from the attorney for the Housing Authority as well?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yes, I can.
All in favor of suspending the rules to allow Priscilla Chesky to address the city council? All in favor of that?
Aye.
So moved, okay.
You know, Todd brings up a, a lot of interesting points, and one of the interesting points that refreshed my memory was, was the library, and I was here for that. And, uh, you know, one of the things I think we need always to do is understand our history before we make informed decisions about our future. Um, and making any changes with the library, if we didn't do it in the right structured way, was going to cost the city a lot of things. And one of the most important things is money. Um, so however, Todd had asked a question to Matt, and I just wanted, because you've been around the Housing Authority industry many years, what exactly would happen if, if the city declares the surplus? I mean, seeing, you guys have a 99-year lease. That's obviously over now. What would, uh, the liability to the city be?
I don't know that I necessarily have the answer to that for you. Um, I think that Counselor McGee and Mr. Manville are correct in their assumption that the state would be looking for their money back. The Housing Authority, if we have to relocate those elders, or we have to relocate that building and the facility either physically itself or rebuild it someplace else, to the, we had done some estimates, and it's a $5 million rebuild. What portion of that, the Housing Authority does not have that money in its budget. Whether or not the state's going to come up with that money to rebuild it someplace else or put it someplace else, um, remains to be seen. And whether or not the state's going to look for the money back that they invested in the 1.2 or 1.4 million dollars that they put into it when they originally built it, I would guess that they would be looking for that money back from the city.
Now, as a...
And all the subsidy that went in, has gone into it since 1992 or 93 when it opened.
Mr. President, I ask you this, just as a layperson, um, you know, in, in crimes and whatnot, there's statute of limitations. Would there not be a statute of limitation for this?
I don't know the answer to that.
All right, but, you know, so I guess having this discussion, this dialogue here, uh, this could cost potentially a city a lot of money and a lot of heartache, too, for a lot of seniors.
It could, could cost the city money, it could cost the Housing Authority money, it could cause the state money, and it could cause a lot of heartache for the elders to be relocated and moved from where they are now.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm at a loss. I'm, I'm just hearing this whole interchange go back, so I'll ask a question. I have one counselor saying that we didn't even have to repay back $5 million. I have another one suggesting, perhaps even on your, on your lips, saying that we would have to repay 1.4 million. Explain the legal theory here for me. The, the state approved, apparently allowing, the Housing Authority requested a lease of 99-year lease from the Geriatric Authority of Hoyok. So we know, let's just refresh our memories, the statute required for the Geriatric Authority to sell or give any interest in land, had to be approved by the Board of the Geriatric Authority and then voted by the city council. This is in the special act. So apparently, somebody went to them in 1991. The Housing Authority asked for permission for a 99-year lease. No one probably could, they figured, no one was ever going to use that property over there. It was conceivable that the Geriatric Authority would last for an eternity. Obviously, all that didn't happen. Um, all we did was grant you permission to have, uh, the use of the property for this 99 years, which was now foreclosed. So the interests of the parties have changed. Geriatric Authority has gone out of business, run, mismanaged, and went insolvent. And now, what? I, I don't understand the legal theory that the city, maybe the Housing Authority would have a legal liability for 1.4 million dollars. We're not the recipients of any cash. We're not the, we're not the runners of the building. You might be liable for 1.4 million dollars, but the city of Hoyok would not be liable for 1.4 million dollars. We effectively gave a gift. It's a gift that's been foreclosed by law through foreclosure. So now what?
So I don't, I mean, I was not around in 1991. I didn't represent the Housing Authority back then. Um, Tom Barrett represented the Housing Authority back at that point in time, and Ray Murphy was, um, the executive director. Eddie Brunel was the executive director of the Geriatric Authority. It's my understanding that Geriatric Authority went to the Executive Office of Community Development, which is now DHCD, and wanted to build a, an assisted living facility that would be sort of a feeder into the Geriatric Authority. It would provide services to frail elders that were not yet appropriate for nursing home care. And the Geriatric Authority went to the state with the city council, excuse me, and asked the Housing Authority if the state would build it, if the Housing Authority would run this congregate housing. Congregate housing such as this throughout the state, um, is funded by DHCD and EOCD. So Hoyok does not have the only congregate housing. Springfield has a congregate housing, and there are other housing authorities across the state that own and manage and lease the property and manage the property that, um, congregate housing is on. The Geriatric Authority would lease the land to the Hoyok Housing Authority. This is a memo from Eddie Brunel, the executive director. The Hou, Geriatric Authority would lease the land to the Housing Authority for congregate housing. The land lease would have some type of stipulation that if it was no longer used for that purpose, it would return to the Geriatric Authority. The Geriatric Authority would do snow plowing, cut the lawn, shrubs, everyday cleaning of rooms, common areas would be the responsibility of the clients, home health aides who are assigned to the congregate housing by the Home Care Corporation, which was Hoyok Chicagobe Regional Senior, Senior Services, which I now believe is West Mass Elder Care. And that work would be subsidized and supervised by the Department of Elder Affairs for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. One of the response, and then it goes on to say, "The responsibilities of the Housing Authority would be for upkeep on the building mechanical systems, building structure, roof pairs, window replacements, repainting, remodeling, and all of those funds would come to the Housing Authority from DHCD and the state." So when the Geriatric Authority proposed this, um, they would lease it, the money would come from the state to the Housing Authority to fund the building and to subsidize it, and it was something that was done in connection with the Geriatric Authority, the Executive Office of Elder Affairs, um, DHCD, and the Housing Authority. And then they put together that lease for the 99 years, and the state put in all of the money to build it, to move forward with the congregate housing. So whether or not the state's going to look for money back in any way, shape, or form, I don't know. I guess that's the million-dollar or the $5 million question that's out there.
Okay, so it looks like the, what, what, I think what your research has uncovered, and which is what I surmised, was that the Geriatric Authority, coupled, which is a separate and distinct entity under its own special act, coupled with the Housing Authority, which its own, which has its own enabling statute, um, got into an arrangement for the building of a congregate house on a, on a lease that has now unfortunately expired. Okay, but I don't see the city of Hoyok as...
The city of Hoyok was involved in the process. I also uncovered research with respect to that, that said that it was done with the, um, understanding of the city of Hoyok because they had to sign off on it under the enabling statute for the Geriatric Authority. It's my understanding that the mayor's office was involved in it back in 1991, and it's also my understanding that the city council, and I think there are only two city councilors today that were part of that vote back in 1991 that approved it, Counselor McGivern and I think Counselor Tallman were on the Board of Aldermen at that point in time that approved it. And it went through them, and the city was involved in the whole process.
No, I'm aware of the 91 vote that allowed it, but I'm just saying is I don't, I don't see culpability to the city. I just, just this, this number's being thrown around, but we'll discuss that more. There's other questions here, and again, we'll get to a point where hopefully the Housing Authority, if they're very serious about this, will make, have an appraisal done of the property and make a good faith offer to the city for the property.
So if I can just address one of the questions that Counselor McGee raised?
Yes.
One of the questions that came up at that city council subcommittee meeting was that the Housing Authority should have an appraisal done of the property, and that, I think, one of the questions that came up as part of that email that was, could not be discussed that night, was that Marcos had appraisals for the property or was getting appraisals for the property, and they did not feel comfortable disclosing those dollar amounts. The Housing Authority has an appraisal of the property. It has shared it with Marcos, his department, um, and I believe that it was also shared with that subcommittee as well, and I think that...
Okay. That would be helpful, maybe, at some point. Marcos, if you have appraisals, and Priscilla, if the Housing Authority has appraisals, if you could share that with the counselors, uh, that would be helpful. Marcos, uh, I think there's some questions. Counselors, did we have some questions for Marcos? Or, or just maybe, uh, or would you like to maybe just make an overview for us?
Very quickly.
Thank you for your help.
When the, when the issue first came up, uh, some time ago, uh, there are two issues that keep coming up even, even tonight, and it is the issue around valuation of the property and also interest in what could actually go there, if not the Congregate House hypothetically. So the plan on declaring these three parcels surplus is meant to move the issue incrementally, not to affect anything, but to open up additional options so that the council could have additional and accurate information and actionable, uh, information. Uh, so to the question of value, we did have an appraisal done by the city independently from the Housing Authority. That appraisal was provided at least to the committee. I'm not sure if I sent it to everyone in the council, but I can certainly re-forward that. The item that could not be discussed, uh, and that I firmly suggested was not discussed in public, was the value on that. And the reason for that is that, that, that is a matter, uh, usually for executive session, uh, because if you give a value, say your appraisal's off and it's under, now you've signaled to the market, anyone that's, that may want to bid on it, "Oh, I don't have to offer, you know, half a million dollars more. It's in our best interest to keep that number secret." So it was possible to discuss, just not in an open session. So, but even then, an appraisal is hypothetical. If you don't go to the market and see what someone's actually willing to pay for it, and in this case, it's very, uh, it's very germane to the discussion because we do have a property that is occupied by a structure. There's all these sets of complexities of whether the city or the Housing Authority or whoever it may be, may be on the hook. Um, so having a firm understanding of, does someone have an interest in taking on a project that involves those complexities is also very important, and which is why we think declaring it surplus and seeing if there's any interest, uh, would be important. The second part I'd like to, uh, elaborate on is, uh, the city council's transfer of powers. There's plenty of precedent, uh, in, in this council chamber of transferring property directly through policy to, uh, the redevelopment authority, which is a sister organization to the Housing Authority. They're both created by Mass General Law, Chapter 121. Now, uh, now, the body is correct that when you follow Chapter 30B for procurement, the mayor would have to initiate that. So if these were declared surplus, one of two actions could happen. The council could independently decide to transfer the property for whatever value you deem is worthy, that's kind of outside my purview, to the Housing Authority as a public entity. That is an option. Um, or lacking that, uh, uh, that action, the executive could issue a request for proposals, as I described at the Development and Government Relations Committee, similar to what we've done before with kind of like an either or both, uh, scenario. In that case, we would test out the market, and we would obligate proponents to say, "If you're interested in the Congregate House, you need to respond to how you would deal with the, the situation with the Congregate House." In a scenario hypothetically, in which someone was interested in the parcel of land where the Congregate House is, is seated, it could be a private developer, it may be the Housing Authority itself responding to the RFP, then yes. Then the, then the proposal would be submitted to the council, and then only with city council approval initiated by the mayor, then would you be able to approve that. So you still have two options available to you. These are, this is only increasing the options of action to the council going forward, but nothing can be initiated without what you have before you today, which is declaring all these surplus.
Okay, so to that, though, how would we negotiate a price or some sort of purchase and sale agreement? City council doesn't. That's an executive function. How would we be able to execute such an agreement independent of the chief executive? I find that hard to believe.
So, uh, you are correct that the council doesn't have...
I think the charter specifically precludes us from writing contracts independent of the chief executive.
Yes, you are correct. So under Chapter 30B, the Housing Authority would be able to respond to the request for proposals that would be issued by the city for, uh, an RFP for all three lots. So the way we would do the RFP would be, um, either respond to the two large lots that encompass, um, the, uh, the, the former Geriatric Authority and the, and the non-developed lot in the back, or only the Congregate House, or all three together. And that, we did that, uh, in a prior RFP where it was, um, 163 and 170 Sargent. We gave the option, uh, that was the Armory, uh, before... We gave the option, that was the Armory before the collapse in the back. We were concerned that anyone who would be interested in the Armory would also need parking. But we also knew that it was a valuable lot between CVS and the senior center for development. So we said, all right, if you're interested in both, submit for both. If you're interested in only the Armory, submit for the Armory. If you're interested in only the empty lot, submit for the empty lot. So we've done this approach before, and it, and it's compliant with 30B. We would do a similar approach here, and, and that would be the mechanism initiated through the executive for, for our value.
Okay. Counselor McGivern.
With all due respect, Marcus, we've done certain approaches to what you're talking about, but it's apples and oranges. If, if we convey property similar to your example, the Armory, to the Redevelopment Authority, the Redevelopment Authority was set up with an urban development plan approved by the mayor and the city council, and they have to act within that. Similar, if we convey property to HEDIC, it comes with an economic development package that HEDIC has to abide by. If we convey property to the Hoyok Housing Authority, there is no package. There is no thing that says that they have to abide by anything other than what their wishes and what their responsibilities are. And I, and I think to exclude the mayor from this process is, is wrong. And whether even if you could, the mayor should be in the middle of the negotiations as the President, the President pointed out.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for clarifying what was the nature of the information that couldn't be shared in committee. I was sitting here starting to wonder, what is in the email? You know, it sounded very elusive. But we've been advised on more than one occasion that when it comes down to property and values and things of that sort, that we really should only be talking about that in executive session. So I thank you for clearing that up.
Counselor Lisi.
Just want to make clear, based on what I'm hearing Marcos convey to us, is that there's no suggestion that the mayor wouldn't be involved in negotiations, but we can, the mayor could work with proposals to say, what are you going to do about, you know, the congregate house? What are your, what are your plans for how you're going to make sure that those residents are made whole and that the Housing Authority is made whole if you're planning on developing on that, on that parcel? So I just want to make, am I hearing you correctly that the mayor is not excluded from that type of negotiation?
No, in fact, once declared surplus, as soon as the executive branch proceeds with an RFP, the next action by the city council can only start after the mayor initiates a proposal being sent to the city council. So it, it necessitates his, his involvement.
Sure. So he initiates, he negotiates, and then we approve. So nothing is really, there's no transfer of property, there's no sale unless we approve of the plan that comes before this, this council. And I think what I'm, what I'm hearing tonight is, again, everybody supports the work that's happening at the congregate house, and we want to make sure that those frail elders are continued to have the services that they need. And I don't think anyone in this council would vote in favor of a sale that put any of those residents at risk.
Okay. I just thought I was hearing something about we could just transfer it independent of the mayor to the Housing Authority. I don't know, I just, maybe I heard that. I must have misunderstood. So I'm glad we cleared the, cleared that up. So Counselor Graney.
Just quickly. Mr. President, how do you market a piece of property without putting an assessed value on it?
It's out to bid.
RFP.
Without, without putting, without, without an assessment?
Sure.
Yeah, you don't put a particular price on it. They just say, this is a, well, it's sort of like our auctions, right? We, we're auctioning all these parcels around town, and we say, hey, this is available. How much would you like to give us for it? And theoretically, I don't know if we set a reserve on auctions, do we? But if we, if we don't, if it goes with no reserve, then theoretically whoever the highest bidder is wins. But this would of course have to be approved by us, as opposed to those which we sort of approve them in advance, I believe.
Yeah.
So we would put it out there, one and all could come and bid on these parcels, and then you would have to vote to say it's okay?
So that means that whatever is bid could be considerably under value of the property.
And then we would vote, then we would vote no, right? Theoretically.
So then we're back to square one.
It's a two-step process. It's one saying, one and all, the world, you are unnoticed. That's sort of the, the only thing I will say is, we do have a legal opinion, and I did raise this at the last meeting, which is, the legal opinion states that it's a two-thirds vote to do the surplus declaration, but it's only a majority vote to do the actual sale. I did tell councillors that, just to, so everyone's aware of that ruling. So it is a lower threshold on step two of the process, but nevertheless. Marcos, somewhat changing subjects a bit, albeit totally related, is the issue of the third parcel. I know you and I spoke via email, and it, can you, I just want to be clear that we had two parcels. At some point in the recent past, there was a subdivision of the front lot from two parcels, from the Geriatric Authority to a new parcel which has the congregate housing on it. And my question is, unless legal wants to weigh in, I'm unaware that anybody can subdivide property and go have that recorded without a vote of the city council.
I will defer to the law department on that, if they want, I mean, I can start off if you guys are staring at each other.
But I just, I just want the councillors to be aware that it came to my attention in reviewing the documents that we went from two parcels to three, and the parcel that's the congregate house, which is one of the ones that, because we're declaring surplus directly, three properties. I'm of the opinion, unless I hear something that allows the executive to do this independent of us, that we're talking two parcels, not three.
Right.
Albeit, I appreciate it was for illustration purposes, but I wanted to ask you, was that actually recorded? Okay.
Yes, it was.
And under what authority was that to do that transaction? Because I don't believe, you know, if we have a piece of property, i.e. city hall, you couldn't draw a line, you know, someone in your office or the mayor draw a line down the middle of city hall and say, I've decided to subdivide these properties with no vote of the council. That's effectively what happened here, because now that we're the owner of the property, I would maintain any interest, state losses, any interest in real estate would have to have a vote of the city council.
Right. So the guidance that I've received from the law department is that there's a difference between property that the city owns in fee, you guys can get up whenever you want and answer this one, and property that's been taken by foreclosure, and property that's been taken by forec, how am I doing? Am I passing the bar? Okay, great. Property that's been taken by foreclosure can be subdivided by the tax title custodian? There you go. All right, that's...
But we're still the city.
Who's the tax title custodian?
Who's the, who's the tax title custodian?
The treasurer is.
So, oh gee, too bad Sandy left already. But, so Sandy can just, any property that's been foreclosed on?
Property that has been foreclosed on, yes. So, you know, to, so that's the answer to the broader question, but also a point that I made in our exchange. There's, there's nothing nefarious to getting around the council on this. It's either explicitly authorized or implicitly by the vote. I mean, this only works, you know, if the council wants to move forward with an RFP process that allows for more options. So if there's anything in the A and R that is not to the liking of the council, it's just a line. It could also be redrawn again for, for any reason. I don't, I don't know of any reason to redraw it, but we can still do that again. It's just a line on paper. Another one could be recorded tomorrow. So, so to the broader point, this is just meant to advance the opportunity to, to sell the lot, which we couldn't have done if it was only two, right? Because then if you declare the very big lot that has both the former geriatric building and the congregate house at the time of putting an RFP, I don't have a mechanism to differentiate between, between both of them. The only method is drawing a line, and that's what we did.
No, I, I can see where you came to that conclusion for efficiency's sake. I'm, I would like to see a legal citation on that, if I could get a, an opinion on that issue, specifically on, on the point of this interest in land. I would like to know, do we have anything in the charter, anything under city ordinance that supersedes? What specifically? I have never heard that before, and we've had foreclosed properties before. So maybe it's just never been done, and there's a first for everything, but I, just for my, I would like to study that. So thank you. If you would be so kind, we have two of our attorneys here, if you would look into that and for next time we gather, I would love, if you could send that via email. Thank you. Okay, councillors, so I think we've gone through the issues here. Counselor Tolman?
Yeah, I just had a question for Marcos. What happens tonight? We need 10 votes to declare these properties surplus. What happens tonight if you don't get the 10 votes? It's just gone until we bring it up again, or no sale, no nothing?
Status quo. Nothing happens. We have no legal authorization to, as has been said here, we have no legal authorization to issue anything.
And if we, we declare, the vote is there to declare surplus, whatever you find out there, any bids you have or whatever, has to come back to us, but the vote for the sale of the property could be one, it could be two, it could be all three, would be eight votes, just a majority. As Kevin stated, right, Kevin?
That's the legal opinion I've received previously from Kara, was that the declarations of surplus are 10 votes, and that the sale, the approval of the sales are eight votes, majority.
Right. So you, you would, you would get a winning proposal, or if it's, they're mutually exclusive, you know, if someone wants parcel A and someone else wants parcel B, then you could get two proposals, and then you would vote on those, on one or both, up or down? Yes.
And no matter what happens, whoever proposed, makes a proposal, if they do include that congregate housing in there, they're going to have to let the council know what they're going to do, whether they're going to take that property and, and move the people somewhere, or they just leave that, they could possibly leave that property the way it is.
That would, that would be something that we would be writing into the RFP, but certainly as policymakers, you could make that a requirement to your vote, to your judgment.
The vote when we...
Right. I mean, you can vote yes or no based on your own criteria, is what I'm saying, but we will, we will also be asking for that as, as part of the submission of the request for proposals.
Okay, because we talked about the separating, you know, the lines, and I know what you're saying, how they broke that, that piece out of there, because it just seems like that back property, the hill, is not really that much marketable. You know what I'm saying? It's mostly the back part of the property and the hill?
You, you may not be able to build on the totality of that lot, but you may be able to build on part of it.
On part, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Are we ready to start taking some votes? Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. Matt, Priscilla, Marcos, as always, law department, thank you very much. We, I think we've got our arms around the issues now, hopefully. Counselor Lopez.
Mr. President, I see some of the residents from the congregate housing here. I'm not sure if you, we want to allow them to speak or not, because I mean, I know some of them signed up for the...
One person did.
One person did?
Yep. Catherine did.
Can we suspend the rules to have somebody speak?
The rules are, they're just for them to speak, right?
Yeah. Okay. Motion's been made on the sec, has been made, is there a second to allow Catherine Tensley-Hughes to address the city council? I believe, I would assume Catherine wanted to talk about this issue at public comment, but just as fortunes have it, public comments coming in after this issue, because tabled items come up.
Can we just consider it going out of order to allow public comment?
Public comment, yeah.
Thanks.
So we'll do our public comment now. She was the only person that signed up for public comment, so. All in favor of doing public comment now?
Aye.
So moved. Catherine, would you like to say a few words? Just pull that microphone down so people can, at home can hear you.
As a retired musician and patient, care technician and advocate, I never thought that I would need geriatric care and live in low-income housing and in need of a protective environment. I had a vehicle, three jobs, a good salary with great benefits, and they were all taken away from me by a disease called lupus, which debilitated me. Cognitive dysfunction, seizures, blackouts, and a plethora of other conditions forced me into retirement at 62. Now I am facing a situation at 67 where Raymond P. Murphy Congregate House, a unique facility, my home, may cease to exist. I entreat you, you may not see my invisible disabilities, but you can see me. Councillors, on behalf of myself and the other residents at Raymond B. Murphy House, declare this property surplus and give it to the Hoyok Housing Authority. We care about one another, and we care about our C-house. The congregate residents matter. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Catherine. Counselor Rollman.
Yes, thank you. And I think, Matt, I was able to speak with him yesterday morning, and I think listening to the residents and law department, I'm going to vote, just as the resident just said, to declare the surplus, so we can move forward and figure out and get a plan from the Housing Authority to move this forward. And I read the emails that I received from the two residents from the facility as well. I think, and the resident just summed it up beautifully, we have to declare it surplus first before we can do it. It's basic. I think we've discussed it out fully, Mr. President, so I'm going to quote my good colleague from the other side of the aisle, Counselor Graney. I would like to move the question, Mr. President.
Exactly.
Okay, motion's been made, it's seconded to end, end debate. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Also moved. So thank you, Catherine, we appreciate your words and thoughts. And just to restate, the motion from the committee report was to adopt the committee recommendation, which is to declare the parcels, and this is the three of them, as articulated. So this is the back lot, the Geriatric Authority building itself, and now this subdivided property which has the congregate house, all three of these as surplus. Okay?
If I may, Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Lopez.
Sorry, I'm not going away, but...
No, that's okay. No, you're right, absolutely.
I just wanted, I know I made a motion, I just want to make an amendment to the committee report that the congregate side be removed from this order.
Second.
Okay. So the two parcels?
Yes. Only two parcel will be...
Motion has been made and seconded to amend the committee report to remove the parcel which has the congregate house in it. Briefly under discussion of that, or I think it speaks for itself, right? I think, I think we understand where you're coming from that.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. All right, so if no further discussion, all in favor of that motion to remove?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
The ayes have it? Unless you want me to have a show of hands?
Yeah. Show of hands.
Okay. Raise your hands if you're in favor of Counselor Lopez's amendment to remove that parcel. Motion fails. Seven, seven.
It's not my day, I guess.
Um...
Supposed to make a motion to lay it back on the table. Second.
Okay, motion's been made, it's seconded to lay it back on the tables. We know that's not debatable. So all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Show of hands.
Show of hands.
Yeah, we'll do show of hands. The no sounded louder, but that, that's, could be deceiving. So all in favor of tabling, raise your hand, please. Seven, seven, motion fails.
On the main motion.
On the main motion, which is to adopt, which is to declare all three parcels surplus, we'll call the roll. A yes vote is to declare all three parcels surplus, a no vote is to deny all three.
Leahy?
No.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
No.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
No.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Seven ayes, seven nays?
By your vote, you have defeated the proposal to declare those three parcels surplus.
Motion to take item number two off the table.
And that will conclude, just for our folks at home who may not be big on parliamentary procedure, that is the end of the issue for this evening, not declared surplus, okay? And we thank everyone, one and all, who came down, and everything remains as it is. And we have a motion from Counselor McGivern, which is to remove item two from the tables. Is there a second to do that?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right, let me read this. "The committee on finance, to whom was referred a financial transfer request of $3,000 from Free Cash to Claims General, have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted, Counselors Tomlin, Leahy, Bacon, and Lopez." Yes, and I believe, Mr. Chairman, this got tabled at the last meeting. You unfortunately were away on business. The Law Department, we had asked a question as to give us a little bit more detail on this. They said they had to give us a little bit more. I believe Paul researched it. Maybe Paul can briefly address us. He had an email out about four o'clock today, which I did not get a chance to read, so I'm waiting with bated breath what Paul has to say. Perhaps make a motion to pass the first reading, just for discussion purposes?
Motion to pass this first reading.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. A motion to allow the Law Department to address us on this issue, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. So at our last meeting, the request came in from Sarah, which is that the 3,000 was from Free Cash to Claims General. Her notation was that it was for tort claims parentheses potholes and the Betty Turner-Sullivan. That kind of raised a couple eyebrows, and then you were gonna look into it over the two weeks. Now here you are. What would you like to tell us, Paul?
Well, that's a tough act to follow, but the Betty Turner matter...
Also of Geriatric Authority fame, yes.
I don't know if I can do service to the prior discussion, but did look at the matter, and the reason for the delay, and I appreciate the patience of the council on that, was to clarify the status of the settlement. And this is all a matter of public record, so there's no need to have an executive session or anything of that sort, but there is a settlement that has resolved the city's interest in the case. However, it's pending final DIA approval, the workers' comp body, the final approval with the other reinsurers involved in the case. The reason for the transfer is that it's expected that that will be finalized just before the end of the fiscal year. There's not sufficient funds in the claims account for the relatively small settlement that is anticipated, and hence the request for the transfer.
How small, Paul? What's Ms. Turner gonna be receiving from us?
Well, I believe that's also a matter of public record, and the settlement would be $1,200, which...
Really?
Correct.
Wow, that's very, God, when we were paying legal fees to defend was a number much north of 1,200. So if you settled that for 1,200...
Well, not me, outside counsel, so...
Sarah, or whomever.
Yes.
But congratulations on that, because if memory serves me, Ms. Turner was an employee many years ago who was on an ongoing workers' comp case, and the issue was, was the bill ours? The panel ultimately said, I guess there's some continuing liability of the city. So that got imputed to also for you to be able to settle this. That's a good thing. And for 1,200 boxes, really a good thing. Okay, counselors, any questions?
Motion to approve.
Okay, so we're at first reading. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Pass the second reading.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion, hearing none? The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is to approve the $3,000 transfer, a no vote is to deny it.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved the $3,000 transfer for the Law Department. We've already now taken care of public comment, so we're up to communications, and we're up to item number three. First item number three is a communication, which was a veto of an ordinance that was adopted at the last meeting regarding use of the city notification system. In accordance with Section 24 of the Charter, I hereby veto the attached order. This order requests that the mayor issue a safety alert via city notification system. Every time engine two is browned out, this is not an appropriate use of the city's notification system. Sincerely, Alex Morse. Do we want to table, get more information? Do we want to send it to committee, or just take a vote, or not take a vote at this time? Counselor McGee?
I would say send it back to committee, because I filed an order that is tabled in ordinance in order to address the politics with the system. This system came into play when Mike Sullivan was mayor.
Yep.
And I remember when it was added to the budget, financing, and we bashed on it, saying, you know, this can become political, it can be used as a tool, and it was guaranteed by then, Mike Sullivan, that it'll go to DPW and the fire station when there's an emergency, and only an emergency, that's when it's gonna be used. So I filed an order to say, hey, take it away from the mayor's office and put it in Spanish for our residents. It still sits in committee. It was taken up once and it still sits in committee. Doing this, and I understand, and I understand the nature of it in the brownouts and everything else, to me, do we all want to receive a call three times, four times a week, saying that there's a brownout going on? To me, that's almost unfair to our residents, as well as, it could be wrong here, but it almost sounds like we're putting ourselves towards liability, in the sense of saying, hey, we don't have the appropriate engine online, we don't have appropriate, if something does happen, do we just now allow the court to say, hey, take a look at what we were telling you? Put it back, let's address both orders as to how you want to really use that system. Like I said, when Mike Sullivan brought it in, it was brought in for one purpose, to kind of get information out there, snowplowing, everything else. Kevin and I, you and I filed to put the blue lights out on the streets like Springfield does. That was shot down. This system was supposed to be the best. Is it easier for us to address the overall problem, get the politics out of the system, and say, hey, let's just give it to the appropriate department, have them send out the appropriate message? That's what I'd ask for.
Counselor Lopez?
I don't have a problem with that recommendation going back to committee.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to refer it back to the ordinance committee. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Valentin?
Excuse me, sorry. Knowing that obviously we didn't have the votes with our first item, could we make a motion to reconsider Counselor Lopez's amendment at this point? I mean, we've done motions to reconsider before.
No, no, you're right, but I just want to get it right. You'd actually have to re, we've now taken final action. You'd actually be reconsidering that. If you reconsidered the final action, it came back before, then you could make an amendment.
So whatever makes sense procedurally, but...
So Counsel Valentin is making a motion to reconsider our vote on item number one, which was to not declare surplus. So, and there's a second to that. Do you want to just briefly address why?
I voted against Counselor Lopez's amendment because I wanted to go ahead with the three items as part of the package, but obviously that is not the will of the body tonight. So in order to allow the process to still begin in some way, I would reconsider my vote to at least move forward with two of the three.
Okay. Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, I also voted against it originally. I would reconsider my vote to move forward with two of the three. The real money in recouping for the city, the last three million, is in the larger parcel. We're tying up the, what could conceivably be the bulk of the money to be recovered and the largest piece of real estate involved in this thing over the smallest piece, although the most controversial piece. But there's no, seems to me there's no controversy around the other pieces. Let's move forward with those two and get on with it.
Counselor Lisi?
Thank you, I just want to express similar sentiments. I think from the business perspective, we should know what all the options are, but if the votes aren't there to at least initiate the process with three parcels, I don't want to tie up the other two. So I'd also be willing to change my vote.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Roman?
I agree with my colleague's statements.
Okay, great. All right, so we have a motion that's been made and seconded to reconsider our action on item number one. Oh, Counsel Leahy, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, if you're gonna put these out to surplus, I mean, I'm not sure if these parcels will get the same land value without having it as a full package. I don't know who made the original motion, but I would make a motion that it would go back to committee.
Okay, well...
It was defeated.
It was, it was, it was at this point defeated, but if we reconsider, that is one option. Theoretically, you could send it back to committee, that's another option.
I'll second Counsel Leahy's motion.
Well, that, first we have to reconsider our action first.
Well, when it comes up, I'll...
Then, then you can either make a motion to do amendments, to send to committee, okay? All right.
Mr. President, if I may, through the chair?
Sure.
Could I address a question to Counselor Lopez?
Okay.
Would you be willing to go with Counselor Valentin's reconsider?
That was my amendment, yes.
All right, I'd certainly support that myself.
All right. Counselor McGivern?
Mr. President, I voted to, at the table, I voted to, for the original amendment also. But I think what we've heard here this evening needs to be digested, and I think you know where I'm coming from. Some contradictions to what I've always understood as a process was professed at that microphone this evening that has, not just on this proposal, but on a lot of proposals, could be severe ramifications of how this city does business when it comes to real estate. If, you know, the idea of marketing a property, I have no problem. I've never said that, you know, just because a good proposal came forward, that we should get rid of the congregate housing, but we should hear a good proposal before we make that decision, knowing everybody has a financial stake at what's happening here. What I heard from the Housing Authority attorney this evening, I don't think the city just was, this geriatric authority slash city was just giving a 99-year lease. She roused my memory to remember, we became, through the geriatric authority, a partner in this congregate housing. And by that, it's not just, it wasn't foreclosure by tax title. The tax title custodian only comes into play when there's tax title. So there's a lot here that has to be digested. You know, I'm not against it going, two parcels going forward for marketing, but let's be frank. If they're gonna market the two parcels, they're gonna hear proposals for all three. So I have no problem, and I won't vote to declare the property surplus until I have all those answers to those questions that have been raised this evening on the Housing Authority partnership.
I also still have the open question of, I want to see it where we can divide this property, the front one, into two parcels without a vote of the city council. I still would like to see that somewhere. You know, that's something I learned. I mean, they're subdividing properties without consent of us, so we'll, I don't know. Those are some of the questions that I think are worth two weeks waiting, but we'll see where we, we'll see where we end up here.
Should I make a motion to table it, or reconsider?
Well, right now, it's nothing, so reconsideration, if you vote no on reconsideration, then it just stays as is for the two weeks. Or we could take a renewed vote to table, I guess, whatever, or refile it. Okay, so nevertheless, I think we all know where we're at with reconsideration, one way or the other. So all in favor of reconsidering, raise your hand. Eleven. So 11 yeses in favor of reconsideration. Okay.
I want to make a motion to table it.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to table it.
Back to committee, rather.
What's the motion?
Want to go back to committee or table it? Let's go back to committee.
Okay, so motion on the floor is to send it back to DG and R. Okay, that's been seconded. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of that?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Counsel Bartley?
I was just gonna, under discussion, you didn't recognize me, so...
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If we do send it back to committee, I can assure you, it won't be taken up probably until September, so, I'm just saying. But, you know, maybe I'll give enough time to gather the answers and, you know, make some conclusions at that point, so.
Okay?
So just, just a point of order. So I made the motion to reconsider, which I appreciate the 11 votes, and the purpose of that, obviously with, or my intent, was to reconsider the amendment that was presented by Counselor Lopez. So just point of order. At this point, Counsel Leahy went ahead and did the motion to table, which we know is not debatable. Does that...
Actually, he didn't, it was motion to send to committee.
It was to send to committee. So if this one, if the motion to send to committee fails, we can try again the motion with Lopez's amendment.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, so all in favor of sending to committee?
Motion to table.
Aye.
Okay, all, we're gonna do one vote at a time here. All in favor of sending back to the DG and R committee? Raise your hand. Six, fails. I hear a motion to table.
Second.
That has been seconded.
What about with Counsel Valentin's order? I mean, motion?
My motion had been, well...
But my motion is not debatable.
So we'll see on tabling, and then we can consider other motions, okay? All right. So all in favor of the motion to table, raise your hand. Motion fails. Now Counsel Lopez would like to make a motion to pass it, but eliminating the third parcel relative to the congregate housing.
Second.
Okay, and that has a second, Counsel McGivern, under discussion.
Mr. President, if this motion fails, that will end any discussion for this evening.
You can only reconsider once.
And we can only reconsider once, and we will not be able to refer it back to committee. We will not be able to put it back on the table. It'll be dead.
Which is where we were before I made the motion to reconsider.
Right.
No, we have a chance to put it back in committee. We have a chance to keep it on the table. But if this, if there's not 10 votes on this next vote, it's done.
That's right.
Well, the vote is just to amend.
On the motion?
No, the motion is to adopt with, for the two parcels.
Yes.
But we never passed the amendment. You need to pass the amendment first for two parcels, because that's...
We're gonna do the commit, yeah, it's to adopt the committee report, and an amendment is to change the committee report, but it's perfunctory. As soon as it's amended, the vote will be on declaring two surplus. If that fails, Counsel McGivern is correct, that you can't then take a second reconsideration vote in the same, in the same meeting.
So just as a point of order?
On the same item, yeah.
If, if the matter is dead tonight, it's, and a matter that could be refiled, right? There's no waiting.
Okay. So there's, let's see, so the motion is going to be, just so we get our process right, to adopt the committee report, correct? Or we're gonna make just a motion to amend the committee report, right? All right. But we need a main motion first, so that's to adopt, but after we do the motion to amend the committee report. Okay, so a motion on the floor is to amend the committee recommendation, which is to declare all three parcels, the amendment is to do just the two, eliminating the congregate housing portion, okay? All right, so that's what the vote is. All in favor of that, raise your hand. Eight, motion carries. Okay?
I thought it was 10 votes, no?
Not to do the amendment, it's gonna need 10 to adopt it.
So all my amendment, please?
So your amendment carries.
Yes.
So the committee recommends...
There was a little hint there, just a little hint in that number.
Yeah, exactly. So, and there's no guarantee the eight end up being in the final round either, so...
Motion to table? Second.
Sure, you can make a motion to table.
Second.
Sure, okay, so Counsel Lisi has made a motion to table. Just so we're all clear where we're at, the committee report at this point has been amended to just the two, eliminating the congregate housing parcel. Motion on the floor is to table. Is there a second?
I seconded it.
Second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Sounded a lot louder for ayes, so unless we need a show of hands, I'm gonna go with that, okay? So motion is to table. So we have tabled, and... We are currently amended, right? The committee report has been amended. The parcel right now is just for the two, and item number one is back on the table. So unless it's reamended...
Can we, can we get a show of hand?
On the tabling?
Yeah.
Sure, okay. Raise your hand if you want a table.
Just to save it, at this point, the ten votes are not very divided.
I know.
It's to save it.
This is against my will, right here.
Eight, motion carries. All right. Okay, so number one is back on the table.
Mr. President, in fairness, can we get a ruling on the one that we don't believe is the third parcel? That if the amendment passed this evening, we just tabled two parcels.
Correct.
So will that third parcel?
I have asked the Law Department for a legal...
No, 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 I mean, by vote this evening, because we did not vote...
Well, since we haven't taken any final action, it's all a jump ball at this point, but...
Fair enough.
Yeah. Had we taken final action, your points are well taken.
Fair enough, if we're all in agreement, which I think we are.
Goody-goody. We like to be in agreement. All right, so we've already handled communication number three. We're now up to communication number four, and here we are. Communication number four from the mayor is, subject to your approval, I hereby reappoint the following individual to serve as a Republican member of the Board of Registrar Our Voters for the city of Hoyok, Mr. Preston Macy of 72 Shaman Avenue, Hoyok. He will serve a three-year term. Said term will expire March 31st, 2020.
May I reappoint?
Motion's been made and seconded to confirm the reappointment of Mr. Macy, under discussion, Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just note that the chairman of that committee was not requested to submit three names, and so he did raise his objection that the process wasn't followed. However, having raised the objection, certainly Mr. Macy would have been one of the three, so he is not requesting a withdrawal of the recommendation. But just a note for future reference... But just a note for future reference, there are supposed to be three candidates put forth, and one chosen to come to the council. Thank you.
Yeah, it does seem like we tend to go over old ground over and over and over again, but we have a process. And the process is that whenever these appointments come up, the mayor is to send the, the letter to the respective Democratic and Republican city chairs. Those committees are supposed to take a vote to nominate three candidates. That list is submitted to the mayor, and then the mayor has to pick one, one of those three. So, as, as the chairman of the HRCC mentioned, he, Macy would have been one of the three, so, you know. But there is a process, so I think it's important that he notes the objection, so that the mayor hopefully will remember in the future. Okay, so we have Mr. Macy's appointment before us for confirmation. All in favor of confirming?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, he's confirmed. Uh, item number five is a communication from Mayor Morris. It's an appointment of the Director of Veteran Services, Jesus Pararia.
Receive and refer to Public Service.
Bacon.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer, uh, the appointment of Jesus Pararia as Director of Veteran Services, subject to your confirmation. Upon your confirmation, Mr. Pararia will, shall serve a one, for one year from the date of confirmation, he shall function at the department head level, and he will report administratively to me. The position of Director of Veteran Services full-time is paid under the department head salary schedule grade 10. He will be paid a rate of $58,810 annually, bi-weekly. He will be eligible for the same employee benefits as similar employees. I've enclosed his resume, which is not attached. Uh, please let me know if you need any additional information, Mayor Morris. Um, the other thing I would ask is if the committee, um, through the Law Department, can just confirm that the Veteran Services Director, is this confirmed every, it serves a one-year term? Do we confirm every appointment? So, next year, if he comes back, he has to reappoint him for another year, but it's a one-year term? Or is it just the initial appointment? If we could get a legal opinion on that issue, Crystal, that would be helpful. Maybe I'll, if I recall, I'll send that to you in an email form. Um, but we'd like to know that, um, for future reference. I mean, we tend to just kinda, once they're in, they're in, but process-wise, that actual issue got raised before. Um, is it just we confirm the first appointment or every appointment? Okay. Motion on the floor, okay, Counsel McGivern?
Get a copy of the resume?
Cause I have a couple.
Yeah, can we get a copy of the resume? Okay. Uh, administrative assistant, motion to, uh, get a, a copy of the resume to all counselors, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Motion on the floor is to send to Public Service. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Okay. Next up is item number six. Item number six is from our city clerk, it's the minutes of our May 2nd meeting.
Make a motion to pass them.
Receive and approve.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thanks.
Thank you. Item number seven is from Josh Pichel, he's the city auditor, as you know, and he's given us a letter regarding a deficit in our parking garages and parking services.
Motion to receive, it's to the Finance.
Second.
Finance with a copy to ordinance, too, as well. And the reason I say that is, I actually have a late file in light of this report, giving one suggestion.
Okay.
Uh, that we can do additional things to close this $400,000 gap, so, um...
Make a motion to take up your late file right now, Mr. President.
Okay.
Second.
That's not a bad idea.
Yeah. Make a motion, accept late files?
Yeah, uh, we actually don't need to do that anymore, but we do have to suspend the rules to take a final action.
It's just going to committee anyway, right?
Yeah, we're not suspending those, we're suspending to committee.
Just going to committee.
Well, see, some else, but... Thanks.
Thank you. Hello, sir. Doing well?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you, did you get down there? I almost forgot about that.
On this one. Didn't make it to the agenda. Yeah.
Okay, thanks, yeah. Yeah, sure. So, um, we'll get a copy of it, but I think it got stuck to something else. But the long and short of it is that the City Council amend the ordinances to, um, we'll come back to it later. We're, we're gonna get a copy of it printed out.
Appreciate it.
Okay. So, all in favor of receiving, uh, Communication number seven, sending a copy to Finance with a, a copy over to ordinance as well? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Are we taking up your late file, Mr. President?
No, we're gonna come back to it, 'cause we're trying to dig out the copy of it.
Okay.
It's, it's, uh, it'll, it'll be here soon enough. All right, so, uh, Communication number eight is from Josh Pichel, also, as you know, our auditor. And he's providing us copies of the monthly budget reports for the general fund and the sewer fund budget reports for the...
Second.
Yeah, motion's been made and seconded to receive item number eight, refer a copy to Finance. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Mr. President, can we suspend our rules and take nine, 10, 11, 12, 13 as a package, please? Send them to Finance?
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to suspend the rules to take up nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13 as a package.
Mr. President, except on item nine, can we send that to the CPA committee also?
Okay. So, we'll take them up as a package, and sending a copy of nine to the CPA committee and Finance, and then the others, all to Finance. So, motion on the floor is to take up nine through 13 as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Motion on the floor again is sending nine to CPA and Finance, 10 through 13 to Finance. Under discussion, Counsel Lisi.
I'm not sure if 10 is an appropriate, um, item to send over to the CPA, CPC committee.
No, no, nine on stained glass is the one going to CPA.
Nine, and then?
10 is...
Nine.
10 through 13 are all just going to Finance.
Oh, okay. Why were they, okay.
And nine is Finance and CPA.
I see.
Any other thoughts? Okay, all in favor of sending those to those respective committees?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, Mr. President, while we're on this topic, can we just suspend the rules, take, I think it's, oh, late files A through H, that might clear off the docket a little bit, 'cause I think they're all the same communications relative to these bond issues that, uh, Brennan Murphy, Brennan, Bennett clerk sent, sent to us in a communication, sorry Brennan, Brennan Murphy-McGee.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules to go to late files A through H. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Late file A is...
Abbreviated reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to allow abbreviated readings for the remainder of the evening. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Late, uh, late file A is introduced by Counsel McGee. "Council approve the Sustained Traffic Enforcement Program Grant." B, "City Council approve the Underage Alcohol Enforcement Grant." Late file C, "City Council approve the Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Enforcement and Equipment Grant." Late file D, "City Council approve a bond of $1.5 million to reconstruct tennis courts Crozier, Jones Point, and High School." Late file E, "City Council approve a bond in the amount of $350,000 to pay for the stained glass window restoration." Late file F, "City Council approve $4.5 million to improve city infrastructure, including crack sealing, micro sealing, paving, sidewalks, and traffic signals." $4.5 million. Late file G, also introduced by Counsel McGee, $550,000 bond. City playground projects, $550,000. Late file H, introduced by Counsel McGee, $1.25 million bond. Replace vehicles in DPW fleet. Motion on the floor is to send all, so we're about $10 million, Counsel McGee, you did well.
Wait, wait, I just made one disclaimer. Cause it came up in an article, it wasn't Mike, it was some other newspaper. They said, uh, McGee wants to spend 45 million. This was Mike Sullivan, his mayor, 45 million. And I got somebody phone goes, no, they just put my name on those things. I only saw them today, so I just wanna make that disclaimer. That's all, thank you.
Yeah. And in fairness, you've voted against many order with your own name on it, and because of that exact reason, I know. So, um, I think if, uh, what's going on here too is, as you know, we had come in originally with this big jumbo bond that was pieces of it, we've already approved, i.e. like Puleat Pool, things of that example. Uh, this is sort of breaking it down into separate components, plus some, thank you, Brenna. Um, and, uh, Brenna, what late, just put a late file number on that for me?
Mr. President?
Um, so, the motion on the floor is to send all of these, what's the, what's the last one? Should be J?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Just make it the last one. Okay, oh, whatever comes after, oh. Thank you. Um, so, motion on the floor is to send all of these to Finance, and then we'll deliberate as to how we wish to spend all this money. Counsel McGivern, I think you have some thoughts to share.
I have to say it, Mr. President, and I hope everybody else is thinking it, but this has gotta stop. There's not one emergency late filed request here in front of us. All very important, all worthy of debate, all things that we've talked about, things we need to do, but why are we circumventing the public eye in filing these? It's the auditor's office, the mayor's office, over and over and over again. You know, this is not the end of the year, you know, file it, we gotta, we gotta balance the books. This is, these, these are very good discussions should take place on each of these items, you know? But why? Why late file, over and over and over again?
I, cause we allow them to get away with it. We could hold them over and just say, put it on the next agenda. That's one option we could do. Counsel Bacon?
We got the budget next month, too, though.
Right, but, um, Mr. President, that's exactly the comment that I was going to make, so I find myself in strong agreement with Counsel McGivern on this. This is the opposite of transparency in government. This is the worst of government, when suddenly we're gonna be voting on bond things that the people don't even know are coming up. They don't even know they're coming up. They're gonna get into a committee that people don't even tend to follow too closely, and then boom, it'll be getting voted on. And it's their money, folks. It's not our money, it's everybody's money. And I have objected to this before, and I strongly object again, it's just poking people in the eye, and it's just bad government. And I encourage people to vote no and have these properly filed. There's no rush on these going to Finance. None. Thank you.
So, is the will of the body to send these to Finance or to put them on the next agenda? Okay? All right, so we'll take a vote to send them to Finance. All in favor of sending to Finance?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So moved. And we're up to item 14 now. Communication from our former mayor, Elaine Pluta of 276 Whitney Avenue, Hoyok, requesting consideration for position on the CPA board as one of our appointees. Send her to Public Service?
Second.
She would love to come in, I'm sure. Uh, motion on the floor is to receive 14 and refer it to the Public Service Committee. Did you wanna say something?
I just wanna say, it's, it's, um, nice to see that she's interested, and I hope, you know, we move along on, on seating that committee.
Yep. I think we're just trying to get a decent amount of candidates, 'cause we got three, we got three seats to fill, so...
Yes, and I would note that in the survey that was done, Ward five was under one of the most underrepresented, along with a couple of lower wards.
This would help your quota.
It would.
Oh, yeah. All in favor of receiving, referring to Public Service?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number 15 is the minutes of the DPW Sewer Commission and Stormwater Authority for March 13th.
Receive.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 16 is a petition of Eco ATM LLC for renewal of their second-hand license at the Hoyok Mall, 50 Hoyok Street. And let's see, according to this, and I'm glad to hear, the mall is current on all its taxes and municipal charges. What would we do without them? And this Eco ATM is out of San Diego, California, and I believe they have a booth set up at the mall, where I think you put, uh, something, like an old phone.
Phone or something, yeah.
Different thing, I remember they gave us sort of a talk one time, they came in, and, um, they put in like a phone or different items, and they'll give you X amount of dollars for, for that. Yeah, so it's, uh, like an ATM, I guess.
Yeah. Motion to approve the renewal.
Yeah, motion has been made and seconded to grant the renewal, with subject to any pre-existing conditions. Any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of granting the renewal for Eco ATM, and no vote is to deny.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved, uh, the renewal. Item number 17 is a request from Quabin ACM LLC for a new special permit for a commercial drive-through at 473 495 Pleasant Street.
DGR?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer to the DGR committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. President's Report. Um, I won't go into too much detail, um, this evening, but suffice it to say, we have the budget coming up. Um, we are gonna have, I'm gonna allow folks an opportunity to digest this. I think, my thinking is probably starting, uh, towards the end of the month, we would begin to have the mayor in and begin some of the, the budget hearings. I'll do my very best to try and do the budget hearings in three evenings. Um, so I'll work with the administrative assistant on picking those, and then we'll begin that process. with the administrative assistant on picking those, and, uh, then we'll begin that process. As you recall, we'll also be doing a separate meeting again this year for the actual final voting. I will also allow enough time to have a second day of voting, um, just in the event for some reason we do not finish on the first night, um, that's definitely a very real possibility. If folks, um, other than the primary departments of Police, Fire, DPW and Schools, uh, other than those four departments, if there's a department that you would like to have come in, please send me an email to make that request, and I will, uh, be sure to get them in, uh, here to, to answer any questions that you have. Uh, just to let you know, I did, um, since we already took the issue up, um, I did offer to meet with the Housing Authority to try and discuss this whole congregated housing and, you know, coming to a resolution on this property, and, you know, could we do something in terms of, you know, what's it worth, what would they be willing? And there were numbers, you know, there, there's, there's numbers north of $1, I assure you, that they're willing to pay for this, so, we'll see, we'll see what, uh, we'll see what comes of that, I did offer to meet with them as well, uh, want to be transparent about that, if we, uh, if we can do that, um, and hopefully we'll move forward on something. Counselor Lopez?
I'm just, um, I was thinking, um, looking on my agenda, if you have any information about the police radios, the 2.5 Million that we passed, and also the outside board that we're supposed to get, where we, you have any information?
Um, maybe the clerk knows about the board, but, you know, that's just a thorn in the side, I mean, I don't understand what is the big deal to do that, um, everybody says, "Oh, yeah, no problem, it's easy," just, but yet it never gets done. We have an ordinance that actually requires it, now, we actually went to the point, so we actually have people defying ordinances at this point, because we actually have made a, a law that says they have to have one out front. Totally, we're sus, we're susceptible to having open meeting violations, anything happens to the internet, our website, you are not complying with the 24-hour rule on, on that, so, I will mention it to Mike McManus, who seems like he's been really on top of a number of things I've given him, but, um...
Mr. President?
Must be right after the website's fixed, um, but, yeah, Counselor Greeney?
Possible to put a, to file an ordinance to put a timeline on that, enforce their hand.
Yeah, no paycheck on every other Thursday if it's not done, that would be a good one, yeah. Uh, paid reduced to zero until it's put in, that would be a good ordinance, um, yeah, it, it may come to that, I mean, it, it may come to that, it may, I'm, I'm getting a little salty, on my way out the door by January, I'm hoping I got that one done for you, um, but that, that's kind of silly. Okay, so, enough about the board, your second question, the police, I have not gotten an update on that, um, I assume they're working on it, I haven't any, heard anything to the contrary, um, I believe there was supposed to be an RFP process where they were going to go out and get some bids and whatnot, and they have a firm that they retain to help go through all of that and, and do the logistics of it, but, um, I'm sure Chief Nyswanger, he's big on that, so I'm sure he would be happy to give you an update. Okay, alright, thank you, counselors. Um, next up is report of committees. Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order that the official charter change through ballot question be placed on the next regularly scheduled municipal election, recommend that the order be adopted as amended, and, um, again, under, since we've already passed the rule on abbreviated reading, this is quite lengthy. I will synopsize to say that this is related to, um, the ordinance committee unanimously adopted a proposal to allow for the recall of elections in the charter, as you know, we have four-year termed positions now, and so in light of that, um, we want to have a mechanism, if, albeit an extremely high threshold, um, that would allow for people to be recalled, uh, as many other communities in the Commonwealth, the Law Department did go through the labor of researching this, and, um, did in fact, um, just, you know, give us a lot to work with from other communities. The recall petition process would be multi-stepped, um, to synopsize, it would begin with 250 or more voters would file an affidavit, um, basically in order to even begin the process of taking out nomination papers to do this. Then, it would require that the people gather 10% of the electorate, uh, and that's total registered voters, so that's like 2,500-plus people, in order to put the item on the ballot. In the event that that were to occur, and the official is in fact recalled, then there would be simultaneously a vote, uh, of candidates, um, to replace that elected official that would also have to receive, and whoever the majority vote holder would receive that. If nobody is selected, then the position would be vacant, and the normal protocols would be followed in the event of a vacancy, uh, that we have. So, that is, uh, came through with the unanimous recommendation of the ordinance committee, uh, mandatory, so motion?
To receive and adopt the committee report?
Second, motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Um, I would only add a couple other, um, pieces of information for folks that couldn't attend the committee meeting. No recall petition can be filed against a person within the first six months of being elected, or in the last year of the term. And if a person was subjected to a recall petition and the recall petition failed, then another recall petition could not be brought against the person within the term, until the term ended. So, the committee has intentionally set a high bar for this type of action, committee believed that we should have a process now that we've moved more to four-year term, and we've had some recent history with a couple, you know, at least one outstanding position that comes to mind, um, but nonetheless, that it should not be an easy thing to do, um, there should be a severe problem requiring a high bar. Thank you.
Counselor Roman?
Yes, I thank my colleagues, and as one of the initial filers, and I thank all the colleagues who supported and co-sponsored with me, I think as my colleague just stated, Counselor Bacon, this is necessary in today's government, and as we continue to move forward, and yes, my good colleague Counselor McGivern and the, uh, Charter and Rules, I also would like to see a day where all the elected officials to save on money and energy and time are at four-year terms. I think it will remove politics, uh, a lot of the times even in this body in a chamber, and allow us to govern and truly compromise and get the people's work done, but there should be a mechanism in place to allow for the voters to recall us, so, it goes hand in hand, my next battle and fight will be to get that passed, I think this is a great first step, I would like to see this on the November ballot, and I would implore and advocate and really recommend highly to the mayor and the administration that we sign off, so we can get this in the legislature in time, and hopefully get this passed, uh, on the ballot this November, thank you.
Counselor Lisi?
Um, I just, sorry, I wanted to say that I was skeptical, um, when this order was filed about whether or not I would be on board, um, because I do feel that, um, we could have done this in a way that would be very divisive, um, and quote-unquote partisan, I mean, we don't have partisan politics locally, but it seems that there are factions of sorts. Um, but I, I think that the way that we structured this, um, it's a one-shot deal, you can only recall the four-year term elected official once in the four years that they're there, um, as well as the very high bar that we set to not only file an affidavit, but then to have, uh, 10% of the voting population, um, sign a petition in favor of that affidavit, um, means that this is a, a serious undertaking, and people have to be really committed to unseating, um, that, that four-year, um, elected official, um, to make this, this happen. And then that's only getting it on to the ballot before the, the entire, um, public gets to vote on it. So I do think that, um, we, we were very thoughtful in the way that we crafted this, and, um, again, I was skeptical, but I think that we've done it in such a manner that, um, it, it is a fair, um, and, and serious undertaking, thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Um, I agree, the bar's been set high, the mechanism is, is important, as I think the actual whether it ever has to be used or ever will be used. Uh, Mr. President, the, um, I didn't receive anything in my package, so, we're voting on language that goes on the ballot, is the language in the agenda, the verbatim language that's going on the ballot?
Um, let's see here.
Well, it, isn't it a petition of the General Court?
Yeah, the process will be that the City Council adopts this, then the mayor would have to sign off, then the legislature would have to approve it, signed by the governor, and then the voters would have to vote on it, but yes, I believe that looks pretty, pretty close.
If I may?
Um, yes, Counselor Bacon?
Under Section 3, the petition would be to ask that the following question be placed on the ballot, shall the city of Hoyoke implement a recall process for any elected official whose term exceeds two years with more than 12 months remaining of the term of office?
I understand what you're saying, I understand what Counselor Bacon's saying, so, is it just a ballot question, or are we sending it to, to, to the legislature first?
Well, this is the mechan, this will be, I would assume is going to be summarized, we put in a provision that the city solicitor will prepare a fair and concise summary, but the actual full law would go into the charter if approved, but what will go on the ballot will be the question, plus, the solicitor is required to make a summary of the question. That's standard, you know, you know.
That's fine, but I, I, I think in fairness, it's, it's standard to vote on the language that's going on the ballot, that's my only question.
No, you are, this is what would go into the charter, this is the language.
That's going on the ballot. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Any other question, thoughts? Okay, oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, our student representative?
Just a clarifying question, this will be for all four-year positions, or would this be for positions that exceed two years?
Just four-year positions.
Okay.
Which right now I believe we have three.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so the motion is on, uh, on adoption of the committee report, which is to adopt this and to send it over to the mayor. Clerk will call the roll, a yes vote is in favor of the charter change, and no vote is to do not do it.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Unanimous vote of the body. Good job, counselors, that was a lot of work. Okay, 18B reads, "The Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order that Ordinance Section 82-4 be amended to expand the Senior Tax Work Off Program by 10 slots from 20 to 30, to accommodate both an increased interest and participation by municipal departments and a growing number of senior citizens interested in participating in the program. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted, Counselors Bacon, Lisi, Jordan, Bartley and Lopez."
Motion to receive and pass the first reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt, and to pass the first reading, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. We had discussion in committee, but it was noted that it had been generally discussed at council, that this had already in a, in fact, been happening. Um, as a matter of process, that is really, once again, backwards government process, and because people had already been chosen in the lottery, we really did find ourselves in the situation of just doing catch-up and considering it basically a housekeeping item, but this really is not the way that we should be allocating taxpayers' money. Um, we really need to be having these things come before the committee and the council, before the changes are implemented, but nonetheless, that is the recommendation of the committee.
Any other discussion? All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded that the passage be ordained, there is no further discussion, the clerk will call the roll, a yes vote is in favor of adoption of the ordinance change, and no vote is to deny it.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved the ordinance change. 18C, "The Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order that the City Council consider amending city ordinances or asking state delegation to amend state law to require city officials, department heads, provide official notice to ward counselors at a minimum when any public notice is sent to a butters in the ward counselor's jurisdiction." I would suggest that when a ward counselor, I should strike that, I would suggest that when a counselor has an email account to PDF a copy would be sufficient to comply, so as not to add on applicant expense. Notice requirements would apply to zone changes, special permits, license board laws, for example, but not limited to though. Have considered the same, recommend that the ordinance be adopted, um, which is one sentence. It's an amendment to 2-59, and it's now labeled 2-59-1, Notice to Council Members of Public Notice. Any public notice requirement shall also include a notification be sent to all city counselors, either by email correspondence or first-class mail, including but not limited to zone changes and special permit requests.
Motion?
And this was approved by all five members of the ordinance committee.
Thank you. Motion to receive and pass the first reading?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, um, this was a good order, I think any number of us have had the occasion where there would have been something we would have attended, except we weren't aware of it until after the fact, and this would just be sure that notices going out, knowing that we can't attend everything, but there's a lot of things that we would make an effort to. So, I think it's an easy thing, we made the bar very low to be able to meet it, and the committee was unanimous on it, and I'll defer to the maker if they want to comment.
I wonder if we should add groundbreakings to it, too?
Yeah.
Counselor Leahy?
I had filed an order, I don't think I, I filed an order a long time ago, within, I think, the last two years or so, that just, it was sent to the mayor's office, just saying that, uh, we, as elected officials, get notified about certain things, uh, such as groundbreakings. And I, I filed it right after, I think it was Governor Baker came to Sullivan's school, and, you know, we weren't told about it, so, I had filed the order, um, apparently didn't go anywhere, so I'm glad that you, but I'd like to see that, um, all city counselors, not just ward counselors, get notified.
Oh, the, the final ordinance says all counselors.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, oh, Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, I, I heard you read something about first-class mail, and I, I'd rather have first-class mail a lot being used, uh, for that place, instead of emails.
It's Catholic drinking, isn't it?
I think you have a conflict of interests.
Yeah.
Everybody likes to get a piece of mail, I mean...
I like the email.
What if something goes down?
FedEx.
Huh? FedEx?
Just keep the prices down.
Those are fighting words, aren't they? He's all upset now.
I think it's a great order that, uh, people are notified, there's a lot of events set, a lot of us like to get to, that sometimes we don't find out till after the fact, so, that is, uh, is important to, to be notified.
Especially, you know, if you got a zone change, and then people are calling you, and it's like you never even heard about it, you know, or something, you know, it's good to know these things. Alright, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion's been, seconded that the passage be ordained, there is no further discussion, the clerk will call the roll, a yes vote is to adopt the ordinance change, and no vote is to deny it.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved the ordinance change. Item Number 18D, "The Ci, the Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order that the city of Hoyoke pass a moratorium on the approval of any recreational marijuana retailers, growers or distributors. Moratorium would expire on December 31st, 2018. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted by Counselors Bacon, Lisi, Jordan, Bartley and Lopez."
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report, and to pass the first reading, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
So, this had been put forth because, as we all know, the state is still working on law and different options that might be made available locally, and so, we did with assistance from legal review some previously passed moratoriums in other communities, so that we can better have more information before we move ahead in the city.
And I think the other goal is, following the legislature's lead, they've passed a moratorium, and also give us an opportunity to pass whatever laws we need to pass, yeah. Counselor Roman, I know you had co-filled this at one point, did you want to add something?
Yes, no, I just thank my colleagues, I thank the committee, and as most of my colleagues know, or you didn't know, I was in Cuba, so I couldn't attend the committee meeting, but but I thank the committee for taking this up.
It's a good excuse.
Yeah, it was a great excuse. But I thank the committee for taking this up, and clearly as one of the most, you know, pro-public marijuana individuals on this body, I think that this is a smart order to allow the City of Holyoke to get all its ducks in a row. I think it's a win-win for the city, and we'll see what the legislature comes up with, and it'll allow us to do the work that we need to do, including, I hope that they're going to increase the revenue streams and the amount that we could tax. So, thank you.
Counselor Lisi?
I just wanted to say, I am fully in support of figuring out a way to create zoning, so that we can figure out where it's appropriate to put recreational marijuana retail facilities. We did the same thing when medical marijuana was passed, and just from a zoning and legal perspective, we want to maintain control over where these types of facilities are going to be sited. So for me, it's simply a zoning matter, and we want the city to be prepared and has something on the books, as opposed to these facilities having the ability to go anywhere by right, because we don't have statutes on the books.
That's exactly right. Whether you're pro-marijuana or anti-marijuana, this is something that we need to do, to put, like anything else, where is it going to go, who, what, where, and the councilors, as we decide everything will figure out.
If it's going to go.
Well, I will, I will say, what, one thing that is interesting is, I should have mentioned this in my president's report, but I had the opportunity to go to a forum that was held by a number of extremely prestigious individuals involved in the law, who I would say have certainly much more handle on the future state of what the state legislature will produce on this. And one of the interesting things was, there was a growing consensus that there would be an opt-in provision, city by city by city, that the local city councils, hallelujah, legislative bodies of cities, actually with local approval authority, will have a vote to, if you want to have recreational marijuana, that there is a school of thought of belief that the legislature will come back with a proposal, that it's city by city, if you want it, it's a local approval vote. Or you won't have it. It's opt-in, not opt-out. So, so you guys very well, some point next year, could be having that question before you, and then you can have at it. But obviously not until you have an ordinance in place, I'm sure. So, there you go. Any other questions, thoughts, comments on this topic? Hearing none. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Is this an ordinance?
It is.
Oh, okay.
Yep, Law Department drafted it, and it's an ordinance.
Oh, okay.
It's a zoning ordinance to make it.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Uh, motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
A motion that the passage be ordained.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded that the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adoption of the ordinance, and no vote is to deny it.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you have approved the ordinance change. Item number eighteen E, "The Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the ordinance committee look into drafting an ordinance requiring the city solicitor position to be filled within a hundred and twenty days of a vacancy. The legal department should not be run by an acting solicitor forever under this administration. Have considered the same, recommend that this order has been complied with. Councilors Bacon, Lisi, Jordan, Bartley, and Lopez."
A motion to receive and approve the, adopt the committee report?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report. Under discussion, Councilor Bacon.
So, the spirit of this order was so that we aren't running endlessly without a city solicitor. However, upon discussion and with legal input, it really was determined that it's up to the discretion of the mayor, really, as the executive and in the charter. And so it was that we would look into it, and we did, so we found it to be complied with.
Any other thoughts, comments, questions on this? Counselor Lisi, are you raising your hand?
No.
Nah, letting it go?
Yeah.
All right. No problem. Okay. So, all in favor of adopting the committee report?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Eighteen F.
So I think we could take F-G-H?
And I.
And I.
G-H and I. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to take up items eighteen F, G-H, and I as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Item number eighteen F is a street vendor permit for Pedro Boca Chica of two fourteen Elm Street for a hot dog cart at the corner of High and Cabot. Committee recommends that it be adopted. And just by way of that, there is conditions. Let's make sure we have all of our conditions. Ooh, I don't see conditions here. So I believe we mentioned in committee, certain months of the year and certain times of the day, but I don't see those on the committee jacket. So unless everybody's got great memory, we're going to need to get that figured out. Um, those were on the committee jacket, but I don't see those that were sent there. Item number, while you're looking for that, eighteen G.
I can fill in the details.
Yes, yes, we love details. Eighteen G is a request from Jeanette Vega of the R&amp;J Kitchen of two twenty-seven West Franklin Street, Holyoke. She's looking to be allowed to operate until December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen, so extend her September thirtieth to the end of the year. So that one's pretty straightforward. Eighteen H is a request from Jose La Boy to sell hot dogs at the corner of Maple and Dwight. Recommend that that be approved. Committee said yes, with conditions. Let's see if those are on there. No, they're not. So I'll commit that one back to your memory. Eighteen I is also for Mr. La Boy of fourteen sixty-five Dwight Street to operate a hot dog cart at the corner of High and Division Street, but he said he wouldn't operate both of them at the same time. And that was approved by all five members of the committee. And I commit that one to your memory, because there were conditions.
Okay.
Under discussion, so, uh, to receive and adopt and approve.
Motion to receive, adopt, and approve the licenses.
Committee reports.
The committee reports to approve the license.
Under discussion, Councilor Bacon.
Okay, so for, let's go in order. For Jeanette Vega, was that the?
Oh, no, Pedro Boca Chica.
Okay. So, okay, so for Pedro Boca Chica, the conditions that the committee voted out included that the hours would be eight to four, that the days would be Monday through Saturday, that the months would be March through October thirty-first, and he noted that the size of his cart was five by two and a half, and there was discussion to be sure that the way that he was located would not block the sidewalk for anybody walking in the neighborhood. So those were the specifications put on the license when we voted to approve it.
Yeah, this writing is all on the committee jacket.
Okay. Do you want me to keep going?
Monday to Friday, or Monday to Saturday?
Monday through Saturday.
Thank you.
Eight to four.
Yep.
March through October thirty-first. Located in the corner in front of Sam's.
Can I?
Yes, Counselor.
Bacon? Hey, this gentleman is actually my neighbor. I just want to know, um, what did he have before? Did a lot change on his, um?
No, no, this is just going through the new way that we're doing the licenses.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And so eighteen G was the extension of the date through December, which the committee recommended to approve. The license had originally been approved April through September, so it was extended October through December, under the current conditions.
Yeah, that one's straightforward, just the...
Okay.
That all got written right on the committee jacket.
Okay. Then we're on to Mr. La Boy, who had two not to be occupied at the same time. The conditions were Monday through Friday, eight AM to four PM, May one through September thirtieth. He also has the small carts on the, and this is his sixth year doing this, so this is not, again, anything new. And when we come to item fifteen, and we're talking about Maple Street and Dwight Street, he's at the Veterans Park Corner. And those were the conditions that we, well, actually, the applicant stipulated what their intentions were, and we agreed.
One moment.
Thank you.
I think everybody can hear you.
You can?
Yes.
What does that tell you? They're very good.
I just got a text saying, "Who's eating?"
Want some?
Not usually this quiet.
You want some?
He said the action's still open.
I ain't that way back.
Mine'll open on Tuesdays.
That's right. I knew that, too.
And the only other unusual thing about this is that he would not be at, he would be alternating between the locations. I don't know exactly what language. Okay.
Hi.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're going to go, um, okay. So for eighteen F, the conditions are as follows, and this will have to come in the form of a motion, to add the following five conditions: eight to four PM, Monday to Saturday, March first, two thousand and seventeen, to October thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen, to operate at the corner in front of Sam's Variety. Number five, not to obstruct the sidewalk.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Item number eighteen G has no need for an amendment. Eighteen H, add the following conditions: Monday to Friday, eight to four, May first, two thousand and seventeen, to September thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, do not obstruct sidewalk, located at Veterans Park Corner. And in the same amendment, to I, would be same conditions as other permit, plus not to operate both carts at the same time. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Okay. Motion's been ma, is there a second? Some motions have been made and seconded to amend eighteen H and I. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Okay, so we have these four items now before us as amended. If there's no further discussion, I believe we could go to a vote.
So...
Counselor McGivern?
Just to remind you that this, this is a permit that allows a vendor permission to be on city property. That's all we're doing. They still have to be licensed by the state.
That's right.
Licensed by the Board of Health and FASL.
Yep.
The criteria as vendors that they need to do to be safe for the public. We're only talking about location here and the conditions.
And if you follow the news lately, City, Springfield City Council right now has a whole debate going on about these street vendors.
We're miles ahead of them, as usual.
As always, of course. I mean, they're amateur hour versus us. But, you know, they're talking about limiting them to certain streets in the city, and they're trying to create this whole standardized process, but we're a little more, you know, flexible and docile and progressive. So, there you have it. So, motion on the floor is to receive and adopt and grant these four licenses as amended. Is there any other discussion? Okay. Clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of all four licenses, and one is an amendment to a license already existing. A no vote is to deny all four.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved those four licenses for those four food operators. We had no finance, public safety, public service, DGNR, churn rules.
Hey, Mr. President.
Or don't J...
Eighteen J?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're right.
Eighteen J.
Stand corrected. Eighteen J, "Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the vendor permit ordinance be amended to specifically address the obtaining the permit, which department will issue such permits, how to track and maintain information on such vendors and supporters. Currently, a vendor was fingerprinted as part of a vendor permit process, was sent to several departments to obtain the permit. No one had any idea of the permit, thus the need for a process. Therefore, the vendor permit should be issued by DPW and Park and Rec, with an approval form signed off by the Board of Health and Treasurer. Have considered the same, recommend that this order has been complied with. Councilors Bacon, Lisi, Jordan, Bartley, and Lopez."
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report. Under discussion, Councilor Bacon.
So we had a general discussion in committee, and since the startup of this process, which had a few startup bumps, it seems to have smoothed out quite a bit. And so we didn't find that there was further action or changes to the ordinance that needed to be made at this time, and found the order to be complied with.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in... Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Greeney. Did you want to add something?
Just a quick question. All these rules and regulations that we have for vendors and everything, I just was, I'm getting, I'm just a little concerned about all the people who are soliciting on our street corners, if we could make some kind of a, I don't know if that's still an ordinance or not, but it seems to be widespread.
It is.
Um, if I may, through the chair?
Counselor Bacon?
We are taking that up at the next ordinance committee meeting.
Thank you.
And there was also a discussion, I believe, one of the things we can do is put in certain barriers on certain cor...
Physical...
As opposed to limiting people's speech.
Right.
You are allowed to put up physical barriers for safety issues and things, and certain of these things, to prohibit people from standing in certain locations, we were, we were told. All in favor of adopting this committee report?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. As articulated earlier, those, the other committees did not have any particular reports for this particular meeting. So we now move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. First up, item number twenty-five, brought to us by Counselor Lisi. The city council requests that the mayor put out an RFP for an independent analysis of the city's attrition rate and review our HR best practices. The city's high turnover rate is clearly having an impact on our budget resources and the proper and efficient functioning of our city departments. Do you want to have it sent to public service to discuss and what you would have in mind and scope and cost?
I would just receive, receive and adopt them to the mayor.
Receive, adopt, and send to the mayor.
I mean, any, any proposal's going to come back our way, and so I'd like to just start, initiate the, the process.
Okay.
If I may, Counselor.
Counselor Lopez?
If you don't mind, I would like to see the school committee being part of that.
Can you say that again?
The school, the school department being part of this, because, I mean, we're paying, I mean, we, we're paying, we're paying a lot for unemployment benefit, and I just want to see what's going on there.
Sure. Can we keep it separate, though, in case, can we, can we file something in addition to?
That's fine.
Just because I, I wouldn't want the, the school committee, I'm sorry, the school department is a huge department, and I think they have their own systems in place, and I wouldn't want this to be encumbered.
Yeah.
Counselor Roman?
Yes, and to my colleague's question, I'm on that budget subcommittee, so that's actually one of my questions for next year, so I might have an answer sooner rather than later.
So, under discussion, if I may?
Sure, Counselor Lisi.
Um, I just want to note, I hope everybody's paying attention, but it seems that in the past few years, we've had a very high attrition rate in the city. We've had five people in our legal department, which I believe there's only five positions outlined in our legal department to begin with, and we've had five people leave in the past few years. Two of them are city solicitors. We have had turnover of at least two staff in the Office of Professional Economic Development. We've had a series of acting positions, including acting solicitors, acting DPW director, acting auditor. We currently have an acting human resource director. And I think that we need to start looking at our processes, and I really think we need some sort of outside set of eyes looking at how we conduct business here. We haven't adopted the salary study that we put out to bid several years ago. We're not paying people in City Hall competitive rates, and I think that at the end of the day, this is costing the city a lot of money. It's like dollars and cents every time we hire somebody and then find them going off to another position in another city. We become a feeder. We train and develop talent, and then they go off to other communities for better-paying jobs. At the same time, I think that more and more, what I'm seeing is that we're, we're, we're having a hard time attracting talent, and then having them stick around because we're not offering those competitive salaries. That's just my, the one thing that That's just my, the one thing that I'm looking at and I'm not an expert in the field, so I think it would really, um, be in the city's best interest to, um, number one, get an independent analysis, like what, what is not working for the city? Because this is time and money. It's, it's a drain on our time and money. And then additionally, I want to know, um, what kind of H.R. practices are out there? I mean, we really haven't had, uh, a robust H.R. department for the past, past couple of years. So, I'd like to have an, an analysis done of our H.R. practices and see what we could be doing to help, um, increase the, uh, retention of, of our City Hall employees. So, that's the, that's the scope that I'm looking at. I, I really do want to limit it to City Hall employees, otherwise I think it's going to get, um, too expensive and, and too complicated because there's different systems there.
So, you're proposing that the mayor's going to come back with a proposal for us to consider? Is that it? And then we're going to discuss the scope and the range of everything on this?
Um...
I mean...
It's, I mean, the, for me, it's like the attrition rate and a review of our H.R. best practices, um...
What about issues like, I mean, I think the number one thing I see is the benefit portion problem that we have. I mean, you look at the health insurance, we've got the highest employee portion for health insurance that I've, I've seen. It's way over the private sector. I mean, like the fam, the family plan, yeah, I just got, by the way, they're changing them all. That just came in the mail. You're talking eight hu, seven fifty, eight hundred dollars a month for a family plan? For health insurance?
Sure.
That's crazy.
Yep.
That's probably double what the private sector's paying. And there's, and there's these massive deductibles now, too. I mean, that's a lot. I mean, I don't partake in the city's insurance plan, but if I did, that would be pretty punitive to somebody who's making, you know, forty, fifty grand a year.
Sure, we have a lot of clerks here that are, are making even less than that.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
I, I, I think to, to the point that you're making, that, that could very bel, very well re, sorry. That could very well be a reason why our attrition rate is so high, but I don't think that we should be directing the analysis in, in any way and saying, "Look at our salary. Look at our, um, insurance rates." I, I think really, we, we want somebody to start with a clean slate, um, somebody who's in the industry to be able to say, "Here's all the factors that we look at. You're doing well in this metric, you're doing poorly in this metric. Here's how you can improve." And, and really not, not guide it or influence that process at all. And that's why I think it's important to have an independent, an independent review. And I think it's just a matter of finding, like, who's out there to do that type of work and, um, figuring out, you know, a range, a price range that's going to, like, how much can they do within a, a reasonable price range? And then I think the mayor would have to come to us with a proposal. Maybe it's two or three different, you know, price ranges to, and then, um, explain to us what those price ranges are associated with, like the scope of the study for the, for those price points.
The, the only thing I wanted to ask to you is, do we really have high turnover rate though? Because if you took the total number of employees...
Point of information, should we send this to committee if there's going to be questions?
Well, that was kind of my point in asking it to go to committee is to question some of the, the things that we're getting at.
The motion is send it to public safety.
All right. Is there a second?
My service.
Okay. Motion's on the floor is to send to public service, but under discussion, Counsel Valentin.
Thank you. I, I do think this is a good order and I do agree that there, that there is, um, some significant turnover and perhaps it's in key roles and that's why we see it more.
Yeah, that's my point, yeah.
And so, I don't know if, I don't know if there's a exit survey that's being done right now. I would love to know that. And if it is being done, um, you know, we should have access to those results. If it's not being done, it should be done. So, I think some of it could be kind of addressed in-house. I'm okay sending it to committee instead of sending it to the mayor's office and, and not knowing what the next step is going to be. But I would like to add my name, um, as a co-sponsor if that's okay with Counsel Lisi, but, but I think that because we're seeing the turnover in key roles, it's kind of come more to our attention and, you know, it was a couple of weeks ago that I was talking about morale and I think this also ties into that conversation too, so.
Yeah.
I would, I would, uh, be in favor of sending it to committee if that's where it's going to, where the conversation can start.
Yeah, that's kind of where, until we were talking about that, I'm, I'm in agreement on certain of these departments we have, like law department, seems like it's just like a revolving door. But I'm just one, I don't know. I'm, I'm not opining one way or the other because I have not, I haven't studied it. But if you looked at all the positions that we look at in basically the city side of departments, what is the actual turnover rate? I don't know. You know, what's it at the D.P.W.? What's it at the police, the fire, all these departments? Is it really a lot? Or is it the law department and a couple of these departments? Is it really rampant turnover? I'm not sure if that's the, the case or not. I, I don't know. And what's ironic about that is the law department of all the departments has received significant raises in there compared, uh, to what, um, over, over time those positions have. Now, maybe it's never enough, but anyways.
And a motion.
So, um, if we're sending it to committee, I'd like it copied to the H.R. department and maybe we could get some...
Copy to the mayor also?
Sure. Copy to the mayor, copy to H.R. I'd like to, um, start generating some of those lists, like what, what the attrition rates are within...
It's a great question. It's a great order.
Within each of the departments for the past couple of years and maybe that would narrow the, the scope of the investigation.
So, it's a really good order. It's a good one to... And, uh, so adding Counsel Valentin's name, by the way, as a co-sponsor. So, um, motion is to send to public service with copies to H.R. and to the mayor and, uh, we can begin to have a conversation about looking at some of this. And then maybe the punchline at the end of it is we need to go out and get a, you know, a consultant service to help us too.
Ask a question, since we're sending it to H.R. and it's going to committee, um, would it make sense with the, uh, maker of the order's permission to, I know we don't want to kind of guide the conversation, but I think we could get some answers from within our department already. Should we, um, amend this to say that, that, um, the interim, uh, director of H.R. comes to that meeting? Because I mean, we can talk about it among ourselves and that's not going to really go anywhere, so.
We need them.
Should we amend that to include that?
I think it's the point of copying, it's copying H.R. to say...
I just want to make sure they're here that night.
You're going to wind up coming to this meeting.
So, we'll count on our public service chairman to invite them, uh, invite them in. Okay, so motion on the floor is to send to public service with copies to the mayor and to H.R. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Counselor McGee introduces item twenty-six, which states, "The D.P.W. look into and address the developing drainage problem on the side of one forty-one that is on Longfellow on the side of the highway. Portions of it has sunk considerably and water is draining into the backyards at an abnormal rate. Soil erosion and flooding has occurred." Motion's been made, seconded, to receive, adopt, and refer to the D.P.W. Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, if I could add, add on to that, um, this was an issue a couple of years ago. We also had and, um, a couple of the residents on Longfellow contacted me about that. And I contacted, uh, Suez and they did do some work there. There's still some flooding and a heavy rain and something that drains, but they did quite a bit of work there and it was very, um, helpful. So, I think, um, if we could, uh, add them on to their amendment, uh, Suez, uh, the water treatment plant, because they do have a good handle on that issue.
And how about Counsel Tomlin as a co-sponsor?
That's what I asked, yeah. If I could.
Okay, so adding Counsel Tomlin as a co-sponsor, adding Suez to this and receiving, adopting, and referring to D.P.W. and Suez. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. So moved. Maybe they can fix the one at Brown Avenue too, which turns into a lake every rainfall. Uh, item number twenty-seven is introduced by Counsel Vacan. Place a radar speed monitor and temporary speed humps in the area of four twenty-seven Mountain Road due to traffic problems.
Receive and refer to D.P.W. I know there's a long list, but there's some homes.
Has anybody ever seen that list?
Really close to the road there. And they had workers jumping out of the way of cars.
Ooh, that's not good. Motion on the floor is to receive, adopt, and refer to the D.P.W. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. So moved. Item number twenty-eight introduced by Counsel Vacan, that a hearing be set to review and reduce traffic cutting through Sunset and Ashley neighborhood. What improvements could be made to reduce the safety hazards such as changing traffic lights, making one-way streets, creating cul-de-sacs, et cetera?
Receive and refer to public safety.
Okay. Motion's been seconded to receive, refer to public safety. Counsel Graney?
If I might be added to that order?
Yes.
Adding Counsel Graney as a co-sponsor.
And could I just make a couple of comments?
Of course, yeah, Counsel Vacan.
This is an issue that I'm hearing all over the neighborhood, from Clayton Road, Sunset, Ashley, every street up through that area since the implementation of the light and the increased popularity of the reservoir and it's just getting worse and worse. However, having said that, the solution of one person may be the problem for another person. So, my goal is to get the word out as much as possible and have as full an airing of it as possible, because I know there will be considerations from all the different departments, especially if streets are changed, you know, so that's my goal.
All favor sending to public safety?
Aye.
Close. So moved. Item number twenty-nine introduced by Counsel Bartley.
President, can we take, uh, twenty-nine and thirty-two as a package?
Motion's been made, seconded, take twenty-nine and thirty-two as a package. Twenty-nine is handicap sign be placed in front of three Laurel for Adaladia Ramos. Item number thirty-two, City Council order that police parking only sign on John Street be removed. Police said, chief said, sign's no longer needed.
Both go to ordinance?
Motion's been made, seconded, to receive, refer to ordinance with a copy of twenty-nine to Disabilities Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. So moved. Thirty-one introduced by Counsel Bartley.
Thirty.
Strike that. Item number thirty introduced by Counsel Bartley. Mayor, please budget for appropriate signage for parking spaces in the City Hall deck and the D.P.W. order signs pursuant to ordinance eighty-six, one oh six, B. one, subsection two.
So, so receive and adopt and refer to the mayor.
Receive, adopt. Motion on the floor is to receive, adopt, refer to the mayor.
Under discussion. Yeah, if you recall, this is what, this is a parking ordinance that Bren and I worked on and the ordinance committee worked on and so now we've got it all passed and squared up.
You'd appreciate the signage.
Well, just get the signage out there to sort of label where the clerk's parking and that everybody else's parking is, just, you know, make it happen.
Yep. Okay, any other discussion? Counsel McGivern?
My memory says that the D.P.W. makes their own signs. We don't need any appropriation from the mayor. I think it's the mayor that might be reluctant to some of the, uh, changes within the ordinance.
Joe, even better. I'll, you know, listen, if they want to send it to D.P.W. and to the mayor, I mean, whomever, so, whatever. I just want to make, whatever the appropriate department is, I'm good to go with that.
Motion is to amend to add mayor and D.P.W.
Sounds good.
Okay. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Close. So moved. All in favor of adopting the order as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. So moved. Thirty-one introduced by Counsel Bartley. Due to constituent concerns, H.P.D. enforce speed limits at Laurel and Gilman. Please report back to Public Safety Committee.
Yeah, receive, adopt, refer to Public Safety Committee and, uh, copy to H.P.D.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, to refer, uh, to receive, adopt, refer to the Police Department and a copy to the Public Safety Committee. Under discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. So moved. Thirty-two, we did. Thirty-three?
Uh, thirty-three and thirty-four, we can take it as a package, refer both to D.P.W.
Okay, motions been made, seconded, to suspend the rules to do thirty-three and thirty-four as a package. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. So moved. Thirty-three, D.P.W. install temporary speed humps on McIntosh Terrace. Thirty-four, D.P.W. install SOP sign, paint no parking lines on Russell Terrace as previously approved, second request. Receive, adopt, refer to the D.P.W. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. So moved. Item number thirty-five introduced by Counsel Bartley. Counsel amend rule thirty-one, allow any committee chair to name any present council member to join committee in order to meet their quorum requirement. The substitute member will be allowed to vote. The substitute member shall relinquish the committee seat when a permanent member arrives to satisfy the quorum requirement. The rule now states in part, if any committee lacks a quorum, president of the council can sit to meet that quorum requirement. Chartering rules?
Yes, please.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, to receive, refer to chartering rules. Counsel Leahy?
Do you not have my name on your copy?
Bartley Leahy. I said it. Okay.
I didn't hear your name.
Yeah, so we, we took this up once before, Mr. President, and we, we gave a loop to draw, but I, I wasn't able to attend the committee meeting, but I refiled this and I think I, I tried to make it a little more explicit what my, my intent and, and Jim's intent, our intent is on this, so, um, that's it.
Okay. Okay, I'm sure you'll be welcome to come to Chartering Rules and we'll talk about it. All in favor sending to Chartering Rules?
Aye.
Close.
Mr. President, can we take item number thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine as a package and send to public safety?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, to suspend the rules to take up thirty-six through thirty-nine as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Close. So moved. Thirty-six is law department review, who has the authority to take fire apparatus offline? Thirty-seven, mayor provide funds to allow an independent company to audit the fire department. Thirty, a lot of audits going on here. Thirty-eight, D.P.W., oh, excuse me, law department provide opinion as to whether or not permanent closing of an engine will affect the insurance rating of the city. Thirty-nine, due to potential blackout of H.F.D. engine, order that I.S.O. mitigation, conduct a new survey to determine if this blackout will negatively impact our insurance ratings. All of these were introduced by Counsel Brezner. And motion on the floor is to receive and refer all of them to the Public Safety Committee. Any discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Now we welcome our late file section, which, good news, we did shorten it up because we did quite a few of them already. Yes, nice job on that.
Yeah.
Okay, here we go. Late file I. Late file I is introduced by, oh, strike that as a late file communication from the Mata Delarosa Church Preservation Society inviting us to a meeting of their membership on May twenty-fifth, six o'clock, in Mata Delarosa Cafeteria. They would like to invite all council members and anyone interested in learning how to preserve Mata Delarosa Church. Motion's been made and seconded to receive, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved. We're calling this J. Late file J is introduced by Counselors McGee, Tomlin, and Graney. Did the city council give a citation?
Mr. President, just to avoid confusion, I thought J was the letter from the housing.
Yeah. So what letter?
Just so we don't have a duplicate.
We're going to call this Q.
Q.
Late file J is now late file Q. All right. Late file Q, introduced by Counselors McGee, Tomlin, and Graney. City council give a citation to James Mahoney for his dedicated service to the city of Hoyoke as, uh, Veterans Director.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up, receive, adopt.
Second. Been made and seconded to suspend the rules to receive and adopt, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Motion on the floor is to receive and adopt.
Can we do that at his retirement reception this evening?
That already happened.
I think it's ongoing.
Five o'clock.
I thought we were going to make it.
Yeah, unfortunately not, huh? Uh, council, under discussion, Counsel McGee.
We did.
Oh, did we?
Ryan, Ryan showed up at the door, I ran in with it.
Oh, good job.
As long as you approve it. I ran in with it and handed it off to him.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All in favor of receiving and adopting?
Aye.
Thank you. And we wish. All right, exactly. We wish Jim well. He did a great job for us. Uh, late file K, introduced by Counsel McGee with Mr. Moneyman here. Two hundred and fifty-eight thousand from transfer from demo worker, demo supervisor, engineer, heavy equipment operator, assistant solicitor salary, rec coordinator, and software license, totaling all those up to two hundred and fifty-eight thousand two. Snow overtime, snow removal, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Motion on the floor is to send to finance, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Late file L is introduced by Dennis Croto, one-two-three Academy Street, Chickaby. This says owner of property, Dennis Croto. Okay. All right, yeah. I think so. I know I did, but Sean's Island, its name is not on this. Okay, all right. Owner of the property is Dennis Croto of one-two-three Academy Street, Chickaby. The contact name is Thomas Wilson, who Toby, we know well, um, from the third floor at ninety-eight Lower Westfield Road. There is Tim Murphy architect involved. Um, the name of a project is to do a zone change application from R one A to Business Highway. This is seeking to put in a professional building to install a parking lot as well as, uh, adjacent to the building project, and this is, like I said, going to go at Lower Westfield Road, and let's see here.
Build a Christmas store?
Yeah, yeah, I believe that's right. And it looks like it's, the parcel is located at eighty-three Lower Westfield Road. R one A to BH. Uh, motion on the floor is to receive, refer to ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Late file M, also from owner Dennis Croto of Chickaby, uh, with contact Toby Wilson. Also, now, this parcel is at seventy-nine Lower Westfield Road. This is to build a professional office building with parking, and they want to change the BL zone to BH. So this is the parcel right to the right of the one we just discussed.
Ordinance, please.
And the motion on the floor is to send to ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Late file N, subject to your approval, I hereby reappoint the following individual to serve as a Housing Authority Commissioner, Mike Falsetti, eleven Taylor Street. He will serve a five-year term. Said term will expire on April fifth, twenty twenty-two. Mike seems like he's been on for.
Motion to suspend the rules to take action?
Yeah, motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to take a final action on Mr. Falsetti's nomination. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved. He's been on for decades now, at this point, the Housing Authority. So a motion to confirm his appointment would be in order. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, under discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved. We wish Michael five more years of success, and, oh, good, the Jordan orders there, we don't want to miss that one. Late file O comes from the mayor, his late filed budget.
Motion to receive, lay on the table.
Motion is been made and seconded to receive and to lay on the table the budget. I believe that is the correct motion. Uh, so to take up, actually, we'll receive, suspend the rules to take up final action on, uh, the budget, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Motion to table, um, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved.
Mr. President, what does that give us for time? We right on schedule?
Right here, forty-five days, as of today. June thirtieth.
Goes right to the end.
It happens to be thirty-one days in, uh.
In May.
If it wasn't, they would have had to give it to us two weeks ago.
Right.
So theoretically, we're going right to June thirtieth for a budget that starts the next day.
Next day, right, right.
Interesting. Late file P, introduced by Counsel Jordan, that the or that the ordinances be amended to increase parking fees as follows, to one dollar per hour for meters in garage, sixty dollars per month for the garage.
Ordinance.
So send to ordinance, and this is, this would, according to the auditor, close that four hundred thousand gap that we heard about the report. Huh? Yep. Adding Counsel Vacan as a cosponsor.
Me too.
And adding Counsel Valentin.
Lisi.
And Lisi. Thank you. All in favor of referring to ordinance?
Aye.
Close, so moved.
And, Mr. President, just for the record, for folks at home, we did receive a very detailed, uh, letter from the auditor saying what the surrounding cities and towns were doing and how we are way behind.
Way below.
In terms of not having increases for the parking fees. So just so folks know, because the next thing out of folks' mouths is going to be, how dare they go from twenty-five cents to an hour, I mean, to a dollar?
To a dollar.
Um, and it's because, basically, we have not upgraded that, uh, price range in many, many, many years, and it and the auditor did a great job, um, informing us of what the surrounding cities and towns are doing.
That's absolutely right, and we really need to step it up, and even at sixty dollars, we're half of what Springfield's charging, if we even do the increase, we'd still be half of Springfield, and a third less than Northampton, and then the hour ones, I mean, the meters, we are still way below everybody else, and we we're showing a four hundred thousand deficit. Counsel McGivern?
I wish we had the problems in Northampton and the attractions that they do, and I think that's what the idea about what parking fees, uh, should be, is to make this a place that people want to come, can afford to come. The auditor's report.
Your user fee, just like your sewers, whoever uses it, it's a subsidy of the taxpayers for free parking.
Well, we started this, so let me let me just add a couple of two cents here. Uh, it's not a complete report from the auditor. It's a good report, it's a good starting point. It does not take into consideration the free parking that the city gives to its employees, including the police department, this building, and a number of different people who get free parking, which I'm not against, it's contractual, but the city should be putting that money into the formula to make a fairness in fairness. It does not take into consideration the downtime for the parking decks, the downtime for the parking meters that took place over this period of time, in which the the new auditor, I'm sure, is not aware of that, and I'm sure the new superintendent of DPW is not fully aware of that, and I'd like to really talk someday about enforcement of the meters.
Right.
And you'd be surprised at what is not happening and what's being allowed.
Yeah. But I will, you're absolutely right on all of that, and to add that, we should also point out, we have a huge bill now to pay for that Suffolk Street garage. That was big bucks, and that thing had tons and tons of overruns, millions and millions over cost, over budget, so somebody's got to pay that bill. Uh, any other thoughts on this topic? Okay, all in favor of sending it to ordinance?
Aye.
Close, so moved. And unfortunately, we have no other items. You have to go home now. Uh, motion to adjourn has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Have a wonderful evening, thank you for coming.
Yeah, maybe I'll be the only sponsor. No way.
So we got the, uh, the ax line?
Yeah.
How much we can go?
Well, they don't have money, so, yeah, we'll have to find it.
If you're star, you have to come up with the money. So, we'll see. Like, you still running or not?
Oh, yeah.
You are?
Yeah.
At large?
At large.
Yeah. We'll see what happens.
I will, I will send you an email.
All right, don't forget now.
No, no, no.
I probably will go over to water there, because I usually get a fire. Send it.
We got to get that, uh, that notice, well, the brown, it'll be over, the blackout probably.
Yeah.
You know, they don't want inconvenience, you know, for fellow citizens' lives, or, you know, that's.
Oh, yeah, well, it's here, yeah.
My office, I work everywhere.
Yeah, well, good for you.
Yeah, we got to get somebody in the next year. This election, yeah, yeah.
People must.
It was amazing, life-changing. It was the best. Yeah, a little Tanner. Hey, Pop?
Hey, son.
Good to see you. Always there for the action, you stay the full meeting?
I made it to the end again, yeah.
Hey, Linda?
How are you?
All right, yourself?
Got to put that, uh, feed button in front of the counter's house. I think that's their house, four twenty-seven.
Four twenty-seven? Yeah, well, in that area, she said they got to put something in front of her, unless they literally had to jump out of, and I mean, her house is right there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I've been there, yeah, I know their house, yeah.
And the people drive down there, easy.
Yep.
They really.
It's going.
I don't know, they fix that, you know? But they try.
Yeah, that and the trespassers, you know, it's the Wild West out there.
I know, I know.
Those people are telling you.
They figure nobody's looking.
Yeah, well, nobody is, you know, they they don't have the support and they didn't report.
They, we could, we could take a ton of money if they would just.
So it's going to happen in the first. This all hopes are on him.
Talking to another guy. But he, he's, he's got a high track of service.
Give Jim Brunold a hand, then board sex. He's a good.
Yeah, well, better than the alternative.
By the way, speaking of OUIs in the news, Von Six has got three OUI convictions. He's been to jail, just FYI.
Oh, so that's what?
That'll become, that'll become, oh, I, maybe he went to jail for something else, but he went there at least once for that, I can tell you. So just FYI, since since OUIs are in the news, we're going to talk about other candidates that got OUIs.
Well, no, it depends on, on.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah. Yeah.